All right, welcome everybody. I am calling to order this Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, July 24th, 2023. It is 6:00 PM. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom. Ms. Lambier, if you could do the roll call, please?
Ms. Darling is not here. Ms. Raymond? Here. Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Brown? Here. Ms. Oden?
Here.
I am here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
And Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Thank you. So we also have Dr. Andreid and Mr. Poska and Mr. Donovan and our student reps. Warren?
Here.
And Dante?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. After you do the prayer, can... Ms. Gilio, will you do the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, I would.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
So we have no presentations tonight, so I would be looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Ms. Brown and Ms. Johnson. Any items to add or communications to discuss? Seeing none, this brings us right up to our first public comment period. Oh, I sat down too fast. So just a reminder, while we're in meetings, I'm sure you don't need to say it, but no extraneous noise, no clapping. Let people speak one at a time. And there's a three-minute timer. I will have it on my phone. And I will... I will holler out as you are about to hit your time so that you can start wrapping up so it doesn't feel too abrupt.
Couple people forgot their address.
Okay. And don't forget when you come up front to state your address. And thank you. So first up is Jackie Okanak.
So I was going to speak as...
Oh, can you come to the microphone so we can hear you?
I was going to speak as the new principal at Mount Pleasant, but you did not bring me in, a sent agenda, so I don't think I can speak as the Mount Pleasant principal, can I?
Well, we just haven't gotten there yet.
Not right. So do I have to wait?
You can still speak. I think we can... I think we can all colloquially accept who you are now.
As the HR committee recommended candidate.
(Laughter). I'm a rule follower, so I just want to make sure. Hi, everybody. Can't wait to meet you all. Good evening. As the brand-new, almost-principal of Mount Pleasant, I want to share my thoughts about your decision about keeping the school open. Nashua School District is a respective community and organization. Within this district, I've personally been blessed to work at three of the elementary schools, and I'm really looking forward to getting to know Mount Pleasant's community as well. Looking a little closer, we see each of the district's elementary schools as smaller communities. Each school has their own culture and climate, their own needs, rhythm, support systems, and celebrations. Each of these community schools has a group of parents that want the best for their children, want to support however they can, volunteer their time, their expertise, while watching their children grow as learners and citizens. All the excitement and celebrations that come along with that as well. Each of these community schools have teachers and staff that want to provide the best they can for the students in front of them. They work together to make the best learning environment they can, and loving each of the students for who they are and giving them what they need to be successful. So I'm standing here, and I would encourage you, the board, to exhaust all means possible to continue to carry this 100-year legacy of providing Mount Pleasant area with its own unique and special facility. No matter what the outcome, Mount Pleasant teachers, parents, staff, need stability and compassion as we navigate through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Patricia Lee.
Thank you. Patricia Lee, Nine Maywood Drive, Ward 3 Alderman, and Concerned Resident. I make no bones about my disappointment in this whole elementary school redistricting process. From day one, when superintendent put up a letter on your website, Mount Pleasant was targeted to be closed, while it is your right to do it, the decision was made and not one parent was consulted. Sadly, when administration and many board members were questioned, either it was denial or very vague answers were given. As time has gone on and many questions were asked, such as, why haven't you put monies into Mount Pleasant for 37 years? The question was never truly answered. Eventually, there was an admission that they did not have a multi-year, 20, 30-year capital improvement plan, but not to worry because finally, they were working on it. When I showed my disdain that this was not already done, a nasty comment was made to me by one of the BOE members. "Well, you shouldn't have approved the PAC. Talk about deflection," but I'll leave that one alone. The games that have been played since this so-called redistricting started has resulted in scared parents, children, and equally as important staff. Can you imagine being a teacher, para, or staff member when someone whispers in your ear, "Leave before we force you out because we are closing"? Then you watch as they say to the public, "It isn't a done deal." Talk about anxiety. What would you do? Depending on my economic situation, I would probably leave the place that I love and have been loyal to for years and years. Tonight, you all have... You will make decisions. Go forward with the proposed redistricting, close Mount Pleasant or other schools, or table the whole conversation. These decisions will lay in your hands. Remember, continued indecisions will create an unstable environment for everyone connected with Mount P. While I want to hear that you are not going to close Mount Pleasant and that you will put off any decision of redistricting for many years, I want you to think about what has happened. I've heard that there have been 19 teachers that have left this beautiful school because they have less seniority and they are scared as to what you may or may not do. Many incredible teachers are remaining, but for how long can we ask them to stay? This tactic is used in big business. When they don't want to be the bad guys, create a self-imposing staffing shortage, and then you're forced to close a business. Mount P is not a business. It's a place where families bring their children to learn, and many move to the Mount Pleasant area because they want to walk their kids to and from school, many because they have no means of transportation. Back in my first year as an alderman, I worked very hard with the city to get a Safe Routes to Schools grant for French Hill. It is a $1 million grant that winds the sidewalks on Locke and Whitney, plus a bike lane to give safe pedestrians access to schools. It affects more than students and families. It will affect every pedestrian, including parents pushing baby carriages. By closing the school, we lose that $1 million grant and a chance to help the residents in French Hill area. To date, this indecision has created chaos in our beautiful Mount Pleasant school, and all of us will sit here as you hold our fate in your hands. I ask that you make a decision here to stop the idea of closing Mount Pleasant, reassure the staff and families that you are not going to close in 2024 as threatened, and that while you may feel the need to redistrict, you will not do so until you either hire someone competent who will work with everyone and not just a few. I would suggest that this idea of redistricting be dropped into you, have a new board who can take at least two years to consider all of the facts. Thank you for listening, and I want to make one point that was brought to me just before I came up here. In the late '80s, I think '86, '87, somewhere around there, they temporarily moved all the students out of Mount Pleasant while they worked on that school. Right now, we face asbestos in that school. You can do it again. There are various locations that they went through, including St. Joe's. So I think you guys can do it. You're a good group of people. I know you have good hearts. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Just a board comment. Can somebody reach out to Christina and see if she's coming? I spoke to her. She was driving, and I'm just a little worried that something happened. If anybody wants to take a second and just reach out to her. June Lemon is next.
My name is June Lemon. I live at 18 Manchester Street. I have lived in this city for 25 years. I bought the house I now live in because it was close to a neighborhood school, Mount Pleasant Elementary School. I wanted any children I might have to have the same experience I had as a child, being able to walk to school, going to a school where the teachers knew my family, where my mom was on the PTO, and the PTO held family-friendly and family-priced events. Mount Pleasant provided all of that for me and my daughter Lucy, too. I spent a significant part of six years of my life at Mount Pleasant, working on the PTO. I saw the excellence of these teachers. I saw the commitment to every single child. I saw a neighborhood school where diversity was celebrated, which was important to me because my daughter is Chinese, and where every child was equally valued regardless of their economic status. Unfortunately, I cannot say the same for this Board of Education or for the city of Nashua. There is no equity in Nashua's elementary school buildings. If you toured Nashua's elementary schools, being unfamiliar with the city, you would not guess you were in the same city based on the differences in these facilities. But what's far worse is that there's no plan to remedy this. I couldn't find one. There's no plan to provide all of Nashua's elementary schools with equal facilities. There's not even a pretense of doing it. The fact that Mount Pleasant has been neglected for 37 years, and I was a parent for a lot of those years raising my voice, and that this is now being used as an excuse to close the school, that shows that equity is not a value of this board or of the city. I have been trying really hard to figure out what exactly is the value by this board. I... You know, I know you all reen because you value education, but clearly, not equity for every child in the district. You don't seem to value transparency either, judging by the way the redistricting process has taken place. If this board valued either of those particular values, it would take more than five meetings to close a neighborhood school valued by its residents, 3,600 of whom, including me, signed that petition. We've gotten very little response from you directly to Mount Pleasant, except we can come up here and we could speak for three minutes. I urge you to vote against closing Mount Pleasant and to consider a more equitable redistricting plan. A redistricting plan that values every child in every school equally, regardless of what school they are currently in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Deborah Wall, 23 Huey Street. You know, you all know how I feel about the redistricting in Mount Pleasant. And I'm very emotional seeing the turnout tonight, so I'm having a hard time speaking. But I just want to hit home some points that I've already made. It would be a disservice to these students to take Title I services away from so many It would be a disservice to families to move them when parent accessibility would not be what it is right now. Those kids deserve to be valued and not felt as a burden in whatever school they may be going to. And now I want to tell you about some of those kids. When I was at Mount Pleasant, working in the 21st Century Program, three of those kids, both Mount Pleasant and Amherst Street alumni, came back as North students to coach both Amherst Street and Mount Pleasant basketball teams. They did this because of the connection they feel to those kids who are still there and the connection they feel to their community elementary schools. Those kids gave incredible, invaluable experiences to the younger kids. I imagine that the younger kids will remember that fondly and maybe think about doing something similar as they reach high school. I also oversaw a community service club. And I want to tell you about some of those... Some of the things that those kids were able to accomplish in 17 weeks. We collected, we solicited, collected, sorted, packed, and delivered candy for Operation Care for troops. We attended the packing event. We made anti-bullying posters for Anti-Bullying Week. We made cards and notes for troops through Comcast Cares. We made and donated Play-Doh for hospital patients. We solicited donations, decorated, packaged, and donated bags of candy for Meals on Wheels. We picked up trash and recycling around the school and on school grounds for Earth Day. We decorated tissue boxes for dried-up marker collection in classroom and informed the school community, collected, counted, packaged, and shipped markers to Crayle or Color Cycle to keep hundreds of markers out and plastic out of the landfill. We volunteered at the Penachuck Middle School barbecue. We solicited, collected, dropped off donations for the Humane Society. We collected and donated toothbrushes from Greater Nashua Dental Collection for fellow students. We made dessert and cards for firefighters and delivered them. We made a retirement book for a staff member.
Ms. Wall, just to let you know, we're at the three minutes if you want to wrap up.
And each week, we celebrated doing acts of kindness. Those kids do not deserve to feel like a burden at another school. They deserve to be at Mount Pleasant where they are appreciated, and the staff want to teach them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie Thomas?
Jamie Thomas, 24 Canal Street. To the Nashua Schools Department, Board of Education, elected officials, and those staff members here at Mount Pleasant and anyone supporting them. As a parent of three former students, two with IEPs, and a 13-year member at the PTO, I am still actively involved with the Mount Pleasant community. With it being a neighborhood and family-based school, it has allowed our local community to become so much more cohesive, both within and out of the school. Children and many families making lifelong friendships with school functions where children, parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and neighbors get to spend time and build a much healthier environment for everyone involved. From former students volunteering, parents offering their services, staff and teachers that go way above and beyond every day in every way to make Mount Pleasant a place that you're proud of, and a place where students get a quality education, with professionals that care about their main priority, that being our children. As a Title I school, the ability to special funding and grants is extremely useful, as we have a population of over half of the students being from low incomes. This Title I allows every student an equal opportunity to develop both academically and emotionally, where I have seen it firsthand and been a part of it for my own children. This school is not just a school, and the staff is not just people that work there every day, but they are a family, and they are a part of my family. With the continual building of new apartment complexes in the downtown area, many of them with two- and three-bedroom units, means the influx of students in Nashua will grow over these next few years. And I cannot understand why Nashua would consider closing a school that is a neighborhood-walking district and then pay to bus students when we don't have enough bus drivers to bus the students that we currently have at other schools. You're struggling to find drivers to drive the students as-is. I'm not sure where you think you're going to find employment when everybody else is struggling to find employees. Uprooting teachers, staff, students will only cause harm in the long run. Do not be like some other areas and end up having to build new schools just because you closed a highly functional school that our neighborhood, parents, teachers, and businesses have already taken their time and dedication and their talents to devote to Mount Pleasant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrie Spear. I live at 9 Columbia Avenue, and I am one of the state reps for Ward 3. I've lived in this ward for 26 years. My expertise in this area and why I am coming here today is that I've worked at BAE Systems for 23 years and have walked Whitney Street and the path going to Mount Pleasant every day of those 23 years. Last year, when I canvassed, I walked every street, every block, and knocked on every door, from Greeley Park to Nashua River, from Thornton Ferry over to Fairmont Street, Amherst Street, and Cushing. And I saw a demographic that doesn't agree with the data that you folks have been using to make your decisions. And by that, I mean to think that a single-family apartment is... I don't mean a single-family apartment. I mean a one-room apartment or a one-bedroom apartment contains only one couple is incorrect. What I saw were single-parent families banding together, living in one room sometimes with a grandmother, so somebody takes care of the kids, multiple adults, two and three adults, and four small children. This was not unusual. I saw this all over the place. And the problem we have is that Nashua has a very high rental cost. So the only way some of these low-income families and hard-working families can manage to live here and walk to work is by banding together and having multiple single-parent families living in one and two rooms. And unfortunately, I actually saw... It was really sad. I actually saw places where a small family was living with no furniture, and their clothes were on the floor. Because of the rental prices that we have in this state, these are constituents in this town and in this ward are being penalized, and they were struggling to work, and now we're talking about taking away one of the life's bloods that keep them functioning. And I'm really hoping you reconsider that. And instead of using the data that seems to have a conclusion already in mind, if you need somebody to go out and walk that ward and count those kids, I'll do it for you. I've done it once, I'll do it again. So I think that you need to take a little more time and use more information. My background is engineering, 53 years, and I know how to do that. And if that's what it takes to get you the data you need to make a good decision, I'm there. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Monica Concepcion Dean. I live at 154 Toll Street, and I have a son who's currently at Mount Pleasant. Of course, there are so many reasons why you should not permanently close Mount Pleasant, and they're all very valid reasons. The one that just doesn't sit well with me and many other people that I have spoken with is the loss of the Title I services allocated to this community. As defined by the Department of Education, Title I provides financial assistance to local educational agencies and school with high numbers or percentages of children from low-income families to help ensure that all children meet challenging state academic When you are talking about shutting down a school that provides this type of services, you are taking away federal funding from this community. I believe we are losing the meaning of helping our community when you are going to separate them into schools that already have Title I funding or have none at all. There is just no way that you are ensuring that this community is going to be able to receive any of these services anymore. I just do not believe that overcrowding other schools will ensure that these children will be receiving the proper support needed inside and outside of schools. I just... I'm sorry. If anything, you are now creating more of a struggle and making it impossible to provide success for these students. My husband has asked many times what would happen to the funds that is allocated to this school that benefits this community, and no one has really answered that. We know that it will be divided to all other schools that are Title I, but not to the ones that are not. Mount Pleasant provides the proper academic and social support that this community needs. Mount Pleasant staff has become a trauma response facility through these Title I services, helping children that may be coming from tough situations, as you have already heard. These children stand to lose more than just a free lunch or reduced lunch. If your answer to redistricting process means shutting down a school like Mount Pleasant, I would kindly ask you to reconsider for the betterment of our children. Please do the right thing and keep the school open for them.
Thank you.
Carrie Hoffman, 38, Perham Street. And I am a resident of French Hill, and I'm also a Nashua teacher. And I'm here to urge this board to vote down this redistricting plan for the elementary schools and keep Mount Pleasant Elementary School open. Now, the plan to close Mount Pleasant Elementary was based on a population study by a guy named Preston Brooks. And, you know, he... His data was pretty shocking when we heard it, that the number of students in this district was going to be going down considerably. However, there are reasons to question the validity of his work. First of all, why we hired this guy in the first place is a question to begin with. I mean, the guy stormed the Capitol on January 6th. Whether he should be... You know, whether we should be hiring someone like that, I don't know if that's necessarily a good idea. He claimed that his numbers were going to be correct within three standard deviations, 99.7% right. You know, I have an MPP. I've never seen a population study 10 years in the future that can produce results like that. He didn't share his research methods. He was so shocked about our housing prices here, just like, oh, my gosh, I've never seen housing prices. Well, he's from Missouri. It's a little different out there. You know, yeah, housing prices have gone up a lot here, but I got to tell you, a lot of my friends that live in Massachusetts, they've gone up even more there. So there's reason to believe that as the Baby Boomer generation retires, and they're all going to be over the age of 65 by 2030, that a lot of these single-family homes are going to be opening up. And as I had mentioned earlier, you know, he said that, oh, we have really high charter school enrollment. No, he said private school enrollment. He didn't even mention that there were... We had charter schools in New Hampshire. That's completely a function of... It's a choice the state government makes, and we don't know necessarily what that funding is going to be like in the future. Never mind the voucher program. That is a function of... That is a function of politics. And if he can say the political choices are going to be 99.7% sure in 10 years, I mean, give me a break. You really think that this guy knew what he was doing? We're going to be closing one of our only downtown elementary schools. We're already closing Elm Street. We're losing a downtown middle school. That in itself is going to increase busing costs. Well, now we're going to, you know, as an earlier speaker said, we're already having trouble finding bus drivers. Now, you're all elected to this board. I have a deep amount of respect for all of you, and none of you ran saying you're going to be closing an elementary school. You ran because you wanted to serve the people of this city. Here they are. Here's the people of this city. We urge you all to keep Mount Pleasant Elementary School open and take this elementary school redistricting plan behind the barn and shoot it. Thank you.
How's it going? Yeah, my name is Jared Sullivan. I'm actually not from Nashua. I'm a state rep, but I was asked to come down here because I attended a meeting here for something else, and a lot of people were expressing concern about this, and so I'll...
If you would just state your address, that would be...
Oh, sorry, yeah. 64 Congress Street in Bethlehem, New Hampshire. So I'm, like I said, I'm a state rep up there, but that's not the capacity I'm here as I'm a real estate economist, and I offered to look at some of the data that were used in this assumptions of the consulting project. And I have to be honest, I was kind of surprised. As a consultant myself, I saw a lot of red flags. It doesn't mean that the guy's processes were wrong, but there's a lot of lack of transparency. So I'm just going to highlight a few of what I consider the biggest red flags, and I think you'd want to think about this and understand them before you vote on something so important. So on Slide 13, he's citing 2010 census data, not 2020 census data. I don't know when you hired him, but if you hired him after April of 2021, 2020 census data was available. So that's like, why are you using data from 2000 to 2010? Should have been 2010 to 2020. In that, he says that, in Slide 13, he says, "population increased by 111 but led to a decrease in student enrollment." So that's kind of counterintuitive. Population's increasing, you should have, you know, increasing students is sort of what he was getting at, except for actually, population decreased during that period of time. So decreasing student population, decreasing student population, decreasing overall population is kind of consistent. So like, he made an entire conclusion off of the wrong direction of what happened in population during data that is 13 years old. My second point was that he spoke in the presentation about the vacancy rate in Nashua being over 5%. That's just not true. Is there anybody who believes that anywhere in this state, there's a 5% vacancy rate in the housing market? There isn't, I assure you. I study this data like constantly for a living. I have, I used the data he cited, which is census. I looked it up today, and the vacancy rate in Nashua is 3.5% for all housing, according to the census. That was in 2021. I bet it's lower today in 2023, which the data is not available on census. What is available is a unique dataset that I have access to, which is CoStar. It's one of the premier data companies in the real estate sector, and I can look at any, all units, all buildings, four units or above, and the vacancy rate in Nashua right now is 1.6%. So let's do the comparison. In 2010, it was 6%. That's the end of the recession, entirely different economic period where people were struggling to survive, not struggling to find housing like they are today. So it went from 6% in 2010 in my dataset, which is, you know, again, four-plus units per building, down to 1.6% today. So again, this is a tight market. That 1.6% vacancy rate is causing rapid rent growth. We all know this. This is not a shocking thing to say, and that's leading to more construction. So the construction pipeline right now in Nashua, according to my data, is running at 40% higher than its historical average. So that suggests that there's going to be a lot of apartments delivered in this city in the next few years, which is potential for population growth, and there'll be at least some children in those places. I think that's something to consider. And again, ask, why is this man citing data from 2010? That's irrelevant for this discussion 13 years later. Also, the economic time in 2010 was very different than today. And finally, the, in Slide 15, the predicted enrollment based on his new construction model was essentially the same, give or take 100 units for the last 40 years, nearly 40 years. I think it was back to 1986. I can tell you as somebody who does forecasting and does econometric modeling for a living, that makes no sense. I do tons of backcasting, which is taking a model and seeing how well it would have predicted past data, and that is not a normal thing to have it basically be a flat line for a 40-year period. So I don't know what model he's done. I will just close by saying, there's a lot of red flags here. The biggest red flag should be the lack of transparency and how he's doing it, who his vendors are, and why he's using data that is 13 years old. And I would say, before you vote on this, I would encourage you to try to get to the bottom of that, because if you hired this man to do a job, it seems to me like there's some very valid red flags that me as a data analyst who does this all the time was objectively confused by like what he's doing for a process. So also, I'll throw the offer out there. If anybody does want to talk to me about this, this is, I'm not great at figuring out redistricting of schools, but I'm very good at analyzing data, looking at demographic trends, and explaining how real estate and demographics work together. So if you do want to reach out to me, I'm happy to have a discussion with you guys at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Senet?
Good evening. Tim Senet, 62, Underhill Street in Nashua. I really hope this is the last time we have to come up here and talk about the potential closure of Mount Pleasant. I want to thank the representative who just spoke before me, because he really gave me the layup to my opening thought, which is that I don't think this board has the adequate information to make such a devastating decision tonight, such as closing Mount Pleasant Elementary. I can't tell you anything about Mount Pleasant that you shouldn't already know by now. I was never a student at Mount Pleasant. I don't send my son to Mount Pleasant. I am a product of Nashua schools, however, and I do send my son to a Nashua school that's very similar in identity to Mount Pleasant. It's a school that would be affected by this closure, which is something that I think is lost in this entire discussion. People are still looking at this, to this day, where we're at Decision Day, as a Mount Pleasant issue, and it's not. It's a Nashua issue. This is going to affect us citywide. It's going to affect the identity of schools all around our city. And I think that's something that's lost at this board level. And I understand that you're elected to make difficult decisions and that you're sometimes tasked with looking at things in static manners, but schools are not static. A school is not four walls with a roof and some windows. A school is a learning environment. And a learning environment can make or break a student. The last time I was here, I spoke to you about my experiences as a student moving from elementary school to elementary school. I think the math off the top of my head, it was a different elementary school on average for every single grade that I was in elementary school. And I can tell you that when I made the biggest change in elementary, midway through the fourth grade, coming from a school in Austin, Texas, to a school in Nashua, New Hampshire, I was met with abject failure. And that's not abject failure on the part of Nashua. That's abject failure academically. And that's a testament to New Hampshire. Pat on the back stayed in New Hampshire. You are more academically advanced than the state of Texas was in 1994. But I spent the rest of my academic career playing catch-up. And that's what's going to happen to these students. You never recover from that. I hope that nobody in this room is sitting here thinking that this guy at the lectern is an idiot. I don't think I failed because I'm a dumb person. I actually consider myself relatively intelligent. I certainly didn't fail in my academic pursuits because of the square footage allotted to me in a school, which is something that I've seen in the consultant's presentation. I was in Portables as Charlotte Ave. I was in Portables at Bicentennial. Remember those? That's not the reason I failed. I failed because I was constantly being, playing catch-up in a system that was not prepared for my shortcomings. That's not the fault of Nashua. That's the fault of the situation I was in. But that's the situation we're going to create if we close a school like Mount Pleasant. You know, I read something at my lunch break today that was really upsetting. It was an article in the Nashua Telegraph about this board and the discussions of closing Mount Pleasant Elementary. Some of the folks that are in the room here tonight were quoted in this article, just like all the parents, teachers from Mount Pleasant that you see, making the case for, you know, what would be lost if Mount Pleasant were to close? What effects that would have on the city of Nashua? And you may say to yourself, Tim, what's wrong with that? What's wrong with objective journalism about current events in the city of Nashua? And I'll remind you that the Nashua Telegraph hardly exists anymore. This article wasn't written in 2023. It was written in 1995. It was 28 years ago. We've said somewhere in the market of 35 to 37 years was the last time we put significant investment in the infrastructure of Mount Pleasant School. I mean, seven years after that investment, we were looking at closing the school, and how many other times in the 28 years since? I was in fifth grade when this discussion was happening.
Just to let you know, we've hit the three minutes.
All right, I'll wrap up.
Thank you.
The point is, I'm not here to cast negative aspersions on the intents of anybody sitting in this room, but when you look at 28 years of cost-cutting measures always falling first at the feet of Mount Pleasant, it makes you wonder what this district has against this school. What this district does not have is the information needed to close this school and stand by its decision tonight, and I hope that this board either postpones it or even better, votes it down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alicia Gregg. I live at 4 Eastbrook Drive. I'm a citizen, obviously, of Nashua. I'm also a state rep for Ward Seven, which borders this area. I appreciate, first of all, as elected officials, the gravity of what you have before you. How we fund public education is rough at best, and it's a challenge, and I understand that. We've had a similar situation recently over on Temple Street, if you heard about it. We had something in black and white that looked very simple. It was zoned industrial. Somebody wanted to put an asphalt plant in there. Why wouldn't we? The problem is things in life aren't always black and white. And if you took a trip and you walked down Temple Street, you'd see children out playing just feet away from where we were supposed to have 400 truck trips a day. And I was speaking before another board just like this of elected officials that were really stuck in a bind with what black and white looks like and what real life looks like. If you go down Manchester Street, and I know none of you are fortunate enough to live in the area of Mount Pleasant, but if you go down Manchester Street, the first thing you're probably going to see when you see this school is this amazing historical building. It's beautiful, but it's just a building. It's black and white. But if you go when school's coming in session or it's getting out, you see the heartbeat of a neighborhood. You see children playing. You see parents who don't have access to their kids during the day but to walk to that school because they don't have reliable transportation. You have hope. You have hope for Nashua's future. You have children who have come out of very poor situations, sometimes other countries. We're known as the Gate City. It's a welcoming city, and this particular school is hope for so many people. It's more than just a black and white situation. Our city has a master plan and one that we can start to see, especially as we turn down things like an asphalt plant and understand that we're moving forward in our growth as a city. And because even that stopped, we have more housing coming. Housing is coming. At the time when we are starting to build what the dream for Nashua is, more of a walk-in community and everything else, it seems very poorly timed to close any school. It's much easier to wait and sit on it, and I know that that can also be hard, too, but to see what happens, rather than close a school and then try to figure out what you're going to do when everything is exploding. Dr. Crisp is in my ward. It has its own issues, and to put even more in there is just going to complicate that for these other kids who have been in traumatic situations. So I would just say that please remember that tonight, your decision needs to be less about dollars and cents, but rather the vision that our city sees for itself as we move into the future and the vision that's starting to be built right now. And when you take one heartbeat out like this, you really drive a knife in the progress that we're trying to make. Thank you very much.
So just an update on Ms. Darling. She was in a car accident on the way over. I guess a car hydroplaned into her on the way in. She's in the middle of talking to the police. As a board, she would like to come in to participate in this conversation, but I don't know how long she's going to take, so I'm looking for suggestions if we want to take a recess to see if she can make it in, or do we want to continue on without her?
I would support a few minutes recess to see if we can get an update on...
Do we want to go through, Ms. Yulia?
I just wondered how many additional speakers we still have?
That's the end of public comment. That's why I said it now, I was hoping...
I think a recess makes sense.
Ms. Raymond?
Does it make sense to take care of some of the other business that's on the agenda? Because I know that we had unfinished business. We had public comments and superintendent comments, then the student members, and then this discussion. But does it make sense to perhaps...
Go into Finance and Ops?
Go into Finance and Ops first?
Yes.
Since Ms. Darling is not on that committee?
Yes. I think that's a good idea. Any objection to Ms. Johnson? And I'm assuming your comments tie in with the Mount Pleasant discussion? So do you want to say them after so that it's more...
I'm looking for Alex. Okay. We're doing a tandem on superintendent comments tonight.
Okay. Where is Alex?
So we'll wait.
Hi. Okay. Are you okay kind of doing this all together and...
I don't prefer Ms. Darling's here.
Okay. I do, too, and I hope she's okay. I know she's...
Did she have her kid in the car?
No. No. Okay. So thank you. We'll just skip. I'm not seeing any pushback from the board, but let's just jump right into Finance and Ops. Ms. Johnson, are you ready? Dan's already been...
What about student comments?
Do you guys want to do student comments first or wait? We can do, yeah. We'll do student board member first. Is that okay? Okay, thank you for being flexible. Yes, and my count is your first, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Good evening. I hope everyone has enjoyed their summer thus far. To the horror of just about everyone here, the school year is rapidly approaching, and while the tranquility of summer shall soon leave us, I am extremely excited at the prospect of this up-and-coming school year. Never before have the Titans had such amazing opportunities to get involved in the school as well as the local community. Nashua North has countless clubs, ranging from chess to poetry to the school newspaper, and I can confidently say that with our wide variety of clubs, just about anyone can find one that interests them. Clubs are such an important part of high school and such an amazing way to branch out, try new things, and make new friends. On a more serious note, the redistricting and potential closure of Mount Pleasant, I'm glad that we're going to have such an open and in-depth conversation about this. I think it is one that the families and staff deserve. It is impossible to miss the utter passion and pure love shown by the families and staff towards Mount Pleasant. I read online that they went as far as to organize free transportation to this night's meeting. I believe that we, as the board, owe it to them, the future students, the current students, families, and the staff, that when making our decision, we keep in mind the length they have gone for their beloved school. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Dante?
Thank you. And good evening. I also hope everyone has enjoyed summer so far. I certainly have. It's a great opportunity to be able to go to Europe for the World War II field trip that I know Warren went on for North as well. Just a few things. If you're interested in playing fall sports, make sure to sign up as soon as possible. Official practices start in just a few weeks, and obviously, the sooner you sign up, the better, just to make sure everything goes smooth, as Mr. Maz would appreciate. And then I do not have much else to say this evening, other than the fact that I'm looking forward to a productive year, and I'd love to hear any questions, concerns, and input from South students or families as the beginning of the school year approaches. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I will hand the floor over to Ms. Johnson to do the Finance and Ops Committee.
Thank you very much. And before we turn around, it's going to be, our students are going to be back in school. Summer goes by so fast. Winter is so slow-going, you never think you're going to get that warm weather. And then it shows up, and we get thunderstorm after thunderstorm this year. I want to say thank you to everybody for coming tonight, first of all. Okay, Finance and Operations was held on July 11, 2023, in the Nashua North Boardroom right here. I'm going to move to approve the Charlotte Avenue Playground upgrades.
Second? Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any comments or questions on the Charlotte Avenue Playground upgrades? Can we go play on it? Ms. Raymond?
I just wanted to throw out a giant kudos to the PTO over at Charlotte Ave. They've been working really, really hard. They've raised a ton of money, and they've done an amazing job, and I can't wait for their kids to see all of that hard work pay off.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Charlotte Avenue Playground upgrades, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve a contract with the Adult Learning Center for Clearway High School at the cost of $642,720, with $335,000 to come from the operating budget accounts, $91.1.99111053600 and $307,720 to come from $91.1.02126755694.
Second? Thank you. I just want to clarify, that's $307 million, $270,000.
Oh, yeah. No. It's only $642,720, so...
And the numbers aren't right on there.
Right.
So $335 and $307. Is that a better number that you guys want?
$640,000.
Or would you like to spend $307 million on...
Since our total budget isn't that high, I don't think we want to spend that.
It's a typo.
That check will bounce. Okay, so what Ms. Johnson had initially stated, which is $307,720, and Ms. Brown seconded it?
Correct.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, Clearway, I love that school. I think it's fantastic. Any...all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the Here to Learn contract for the 2023-2024 school year for up to $26,775 funding to come from the IDEA grant.
I'll second. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Here to Learn contract for the 2023-2024 school year for up to $26,775, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the contract with Boothby Therapy Services for the 2023-2024 school year for augmentative communication services for up to $36,000 funding to come from IDEA grant.
Second? Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the contract with Boothby Therapy Services, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to purchase a 2023 Laser X-Mark mower from Turf Depot of Huxit, New Hampshire in the amount of $15,519, fund to come from miscellaneous equipment, $91.1.22.2620.71999.
Second? Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any comments or questions? Lot of green.
What do all this rain? You've got a lot of grass.
It's hard to mow with all that water on there. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the purchase of the 2023 Laser X-Mark mower, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the purchase of a 2022 F-350 Super Duty pickup from Pony Ford of Bow, New Hampshire in the amount of $76,797.95, funds to come from the FY23 SURF.
Second? Thank you. Any comments or questions?
I just want to let everybody know, in case anybody's questioning about all these purchases that we're making here, I mean, some of the trucks have lived more than their lifespan, and I want to let everybody know that I question up and down, are we getting the bids and are we doing our due diligence to make sure we're getting the best price out there in the state for these vehicles? So, I mean, it's hard that we have to, you know, in the midst of everything that we're doing here, but we have to keep up with these vehicles that do plow the schools and do work at going from school to school. So I'm just letting everybody know about this in case any questions asked.
Yes.
I do believe the Super Duty includes a plow, because when I looked up prices, it didn't look to be 70, but plows aren't cheap.
No, they're not. Okay. So...do we vote on that?
No.
Okay.
I made the comment.
Okay. I thought so. So all those in favor of purchasing a 2022 F-350 Super Duty pickup, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the 2023 Freightliner 108 SD Plus from Sourcewell in the amount of $234,520, funds to come from FY24 SURF.
Second? Thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of purchasing the 2023 Freightliner, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to purchase a 2023 Versa Lift VST 471 in the amount not to exceed $217,443, funds to come from FY24 SURF.
Second? Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of purchasing a 2023 Versa Lift, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the contract for installation of a rubberized playground surface at Franklin Street School to a Brian's and Son in the amount of $40,993, funds to come from the FY22 S-Gro 25,000 account, $91.1010.24460081100, with the remainder to come from the JSBC construction budget of $15,993.
Second? Thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And my last motion is to accept the FY23 June transfer report.
Second? Any comments or questions on the fiscal year '23 June transfer report? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes. Let's take a recess to check in with Christina and see where we are, if she is okay, if she's planning on coming. So let's just take a quick 10-minute recess, and we'll reconvene. Okay, so we can do HR really quickly, too, and then I guess we'll just go into the discussion. So we'll do HR first. Are you okay waiting on policy, Heather, or maybe...what do you want to do, Ms. Raymond?
I have no preference for the scheduled agenda, as long as we go through the agenda at some point.
Okay. Perfect. Just want to make sure we're all on board, so I will hand the floor over to Ms. Gilio for HR.
Thank you. I recommend to suspend the rules to consider items from the HR meeting held earlier this evening.
Second? Thank you, Ms. Oden. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Recommendation to approve the personnel recommendations dated July 24, 2023.
Second? Thank you, Ms. Oden. Any comments or questions on the personnel recommendations from July 24, 2023? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
We have some exciting administrative recommendations tonight. We've expanded our staff. It's very exciting.
Yes.
So the first is that we...I recommend that we elect Jackie Okonak...
Okonak.
I'll get it right eventually, as principal of the Mount Pleasant School for the '22-24 school year at a salary of $101,300.
Second? Thank you, Ms. Oden. Comments or questions? I think we're all just really excited to say aye. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes. Welcome. Thank you. Dr. Andre, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate my utmost support for Principal Okonak. She's an incredible instructional leader, incredible person. I think she's going to be a wonderful fit over at Mount Pleasant. So we've had a number of conversations over the years, and again, I think her personal commitment to students and the community, her history, and just the way she models and exemplifies leadership, I could not be more proud of her, and I'm really happy to make this recommendation and you to vote on it. So welcome aboard, and I know you're going to do great things, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, she's way behind.
She's behind the computer monitor.
I am over here.
We vote? We voted on that?
Yes.
I'm losing it. Okay. All right. Next, I have a recommendation to elect Maria Kendall as Assistant Principal at Dr. Crisp Elementary School for the 2023-2024 school year at a salary of $79,375.
I'll second. Ooh. Who wants it? Who are you going to give it to? Ms. Lambier?
All of them.
Ms. Johnson, okay.
Give it a little faster.
It's a photo finish. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of...oh, my God, what was...
Maria Kendall.
Maria Kendall, going over as Assistant Principal for Dr. Crisp, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, next, we have a recommendation to elect Jamie Cochran as Assistant Principal at Charlotte Ave Elementary School for the 2023-2024 school year at a salary of $79,375.
I'll second. Thank you, Ms. Oden. Any comments?
Johnson.
It was Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Sorry. My kids say I can't hear anymore, and I'm like, really, if I'm not looking at you, I don't know where it's coming from, so I'll keep my eyes over here next time. So all those in favor of approving Jamie Cochran for Charlotte Ave Assistant Principal, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great. Next, I have a recommendation to elect Kaitlin Burns as preschool coordinator at Franklin Street for the 2023-2024 school year at a salary of $70,000.
I'll second. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of having Kaitlin Burns be the preschool coordinator at Franklin Street, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Welcome. Well, she's just moving over, right?
Finally, we have a recommendation to elect Kate Marcot as Director of Guidance at Nashua High School North for the 2023-2024 year at a salary of $91,846.
I'll second. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any comments or questions? So on the motion for Katie Marcot to become the Director of Guidance at Nashua High School North, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. All right, so I think we are just going to be moving on, which is unfortunate. I hope Ms. Darling is okay. I wasn't able to connect with her over the recess, so our thoughts are out with her, and hopefully not too much damage happened in her life just now. So we're going into the redistricting conversation. Dr. Andre?
I just...
Do you want to go into superintendent's comments?
Can I do superintendent's comments first?
Yes.
Thanks.
I'm just so excited about this.
So before I move into my comments tonight, I had a difficult conversation with a parent today, and I just would hope the Nashua School District, if we can just take a moment of silence. Over the last week, we lost a 7th grade student at Elm Street, Sophia Lamash. She lost her battle to her childhood, longstanding battle with childhood cancer just recently. So if we can just take a moment to remember her. Thank you. Those aren't fun. So I want to do something a little unorthodox tonight, just going to yield some of my superintendent's comments times. We heard a lot of comments regarding Mount Pleasant and the community without really a question and answer, and sometimes it's not an agenda item for the public to really have that comment. So I have been working with the Mount Pleasant members of the community. The BOE has received a packet from the Alex Homola. I just make sure I got it right. But I really want to give this opportunity for the BOE, if there's any specific questions, to be able to address her and see if we can have more of that question and answer without actually having an official agenda item. Again, I really, over the last several months, want to thank the Mount Pleasant community and all of the community for engaging in a thoughtful, professional, respectful conversation on their advocacy for all the students, not only at Mount Pleasant but of the Nashua School District. This has been really difficult, and again, I think this is a little unorthodox, so without breaking any kind of policy or setting up other agenda items, I think it's really important that we provide a couple of minutes if there are any questions that were in that presentation back to Alex, and she may be able to respond. If you want to just step up with the microphone.
You can go right to the public comment microphone. Okay.
6 Ayer Street, if you want it.
Is the microphone on?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Perfect. So this was a very interesting packet that you put together for us, and I very much appreciate it. It has not lost on us the passion and dedication and love that comes from Mount Pleasant over and over and over again. And don't tempt me with a bunch of PowerPoint slides. This is fantastic. So hopefully, we've all reviewed it. This was not part of our agenda, so this wasn't in our working packet. It was something that is presented to us from the public. It can be available in the minutes after, but I wanted to give the board an opportunity to ask Ms. Homola any questions, if they had any. I see everybody's looking. So in here, we have the petition, which is signed by how many people? 3,700, you said?
3,610, last I looked.
3,610, people who are in support of Mount Pleasant. And then we also have student testimonials, and then some pieces in regards to the logistics of operating a school, operating a district, and making those tough decisions. So does anybody have any questions on the information that Ms. Homola presented? Ms. Raymond?
Does this have any significant differences from what was emailed to us yesterday?
Okay.
Not a single edit has been made.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I read that yesterday, and so I just, as I'm scanning, I'm like, oh, I've seen this, so that makes sense why. Thank you.
Yeah, it was sent to us so that we could review it. I was not aware we'd be getting these packets, so this is very nice.
I know some people like to touch and feel, you know. I went with the teacher method. They were reminding me of, right? Like, present it, then, you know, hold it, so.
Ms. Brown?
Are there one or two main points that you'd like us to focus on from this? Because it's excellent, well-put-together, a lot of extensive information.
Thank you. I guess I would say first, just as anecdotally, my husband even said, you didn't even do this much work in school, because we went to high school together, and I was like, oh, you're totally right. So to my teachers out there in Milford, there you go. It just took a 20-year delay. I think my biggest things in reviewing the information that's included in the packet is just looking over the city website and reminding myself what Nashua's goals are, obviously, why I bought a home here, why I wanted to start my family here, and then the Board of Ed site as well. I scoured every single page that existed, whether, you know, it was the contact us page, any other that seemed, you know, strenuous. I just looked to see for any information to remind myself, and then hopefully you all as well, of your goals, our goals, for the city, for the children, all of those things. And that's in there.
Okay. Ms. Gilio?
I would just like to thank you for all this hard work. I also received it yesterday and had a chance to look at it, and I was glad that I got it yesterday, so I had plenty of time to see it before tonight, and I just thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Sorry it was delayed. The two-year-old wasn't cooperating, as you saw tonight.
No.
Mr. Claffey?
Yeah, I actually had a question for Dr. Andre about something that you mentioned in the presentation. That is, one of the slides says that there are Mount Pleasant students not accounted for, the bottom 128, does that sound right?
125, I think.
125. Hundred and twenty-five. And then when I look at, um, the scenario two spreadsheet, I don't see where the 283 students are fully accounted for at Amherst Street and Charlotte Avenue.
So I don't know where her descriptions, where her numbers were either, but I think when we looked at the redistricting, um, there are a number of students going to Charlotte, a number of students at Amherst, and another, a number of students at Dr. Crisp. Um, there are also, when we looked at students currently at Mount Pleasant, there's about 50 students on variances as well. So there might be a couple different addresses that don't show up in the redistricting. So I'm not quite sure the, the, yeah, looking at the discrepancy.
So where did?
I, I didn't compile that information myself. One of the teachers did, but I'm sure I could email it to you with, with her work. I know that she kind of showed her math. So can kind of send that out. Or she will come up, if that's okay, but like, I know we're already kind of treading whites here, so.
Maybe we can talk about that later.
Yeah, we can talk. I mean, we had our data analyst, again, look at the addresses and where the students were going. So I don't know if there's 100 student stats as a discrepancy.
So I think, yeah, if you want to just really quickly, I just, I don't, I, I do really appreciate this. I also don't want to set a precedent that we are going to step this far outside of public comment with public comment. So I just want to keep it future-focused and not just.
Okay, so my name is Donna Marie Vic, 19 Raymond Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. I looked at the numbers and looking at Preston Smith's numbers, the one with Mount Pleasant open, Mount Pleasant closed, and then Ms. Bishop, your numbers. Um, it looks like, I'm looking at number for Mount Pleasant, 265 students. If I look at Dr. Crisp in all three of those scenarios, it stays at 430 across the board, all three scenarios. I saw Amherst Street increased by 72, which was on your slide. Charlotte Ave increased by 68, which was on your slide. Then if I look at the ones with Mount Pleasant closed, 265. New Searls, I'm looking at actually the total number of 4,312 across the board, 4,312. If you look at New Searls, it has 183 or two in Preston's first one. It increases when Mount Pleasant is closed to 358 Prestons. And when your scenario, New Searls increases to 341. So basically, what I looked, zero change to Dr. Crisp in all the scenarios. And I've been hearing a lot of people talk about Dr. Crisp getting our students. Um, and then it says, um, New Searls appears to get the largest students increase. I'm a special ed power educator at Mount Pleasant.
Thank you. Any follow-up? Later, okay. Okay, so I think this is a great segue into the whole discussion that we need to be having tonight. But Ms. Homola, thank you so much for putting this together. Our kudos to you. And again, dedication and passion are not lost on us, so we really appreciate it.
And just for last comments, just, I've been able to tour many of our schools the last couple of weeks. Um, really just shout out to our custodians, our secretaries, um, the staff that have been in the building. So there's a lot of construction going on. There's a lot of cleaning going on. It's difficult, but, um, really want to give a shout out to our, um, employees who are getting the schools ready, as Dante and Warren said. In just a few weeks, um, we'll be reopening. So it's a lot of hard work. It's a lot of turnover, but I just want to acknowledge all the, um, hard work that they're doing to get, to get us ready for next school year.
Thank you. Okay, so let's open up the discussion to eventually come to a conclusion, I am hoping, in regards to elementary redistricting lines. Somebody said it earlier, um, this is not just a Mount Pleasant issue, it's an entire city issue. Um, I hope we're taking that into account as we're talking about things, as we're thinking about things. Um, I think everybody in the audience and at home can know and understands that not a single one of us has passively participated in any of these decisions. Um, we are all dedicated to growing a greater and better community and student base, um, in Nashua. And I think every single one of us is up here to do our best and, and advocate for what we think is most important for, um, our own moral compasses. So I will be opening up the discussion. Let's stick with the same kind of rules that we've had in play that I think have worked really well the last couple of meetings, which is, um, the crosstalk has been fantastic, just to address things to me. If you have a specific question, address it to Dr. Andre. If we go back and forth, I know sometimes what happens with our board is we get really passionate about the details. Um, it can sometimes sound like we get stuck in the weeds, but I think we just really get stuck on doing the best and coming up with the best phrasing of things. So if we start feeling like we're getting circular in our discussion, I'm just going to say, hey, guys, I feel like we're getting circular. Let's take a step back, reevaluate, and just kind of recollect ourselves and start over. Um, if we could possibly not have a bunch of different amendments, that would be fantastic. So I am open to having a discussion, um, so that we can get to one motion at the end that's more concise. So I am going to open up the floor right now to board members, um, in regards to elementary school redistricting lines. So, Ms. Gilio?
May I make a motion at this point?
You can do whatever you want, Ms. Gilio.
Well, that is what I, I moved to delay elementary school redistricting for two years until the end of the school year 2025.
Second.
So moved to delay the elementary school redistricting lines until after?
The end of the school year 2025.
So, and Ms. Lambier seconded this. So for me to understand this, you don't want to have a discussion about redistricting any school lines until June of 2025?
Um, no, that's not my intent. My intent is that conversations, really wise conversations, can take place as they need to be. But my, my feeling about it is that the students who were in kindergarten when COVID hit, um, need two more years in their community schools all over the district, Mount Pleasant included, but also at the other schools, so that they don't have additional disruption to their educational life. And that's why I chose the two years delay. But I certainly think that, um, we can, we can get together and make really good valid plans for redistricting after the end of that school year. I don't, I'm not saying that we can't talk about it till then.
Okay. Um, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I think that's a pretty good plan. I'm not going to say whether I'm for it, against it. I want to hear other people's opinions right now. My focus right now also is on Mount Pleasant. I'm not going to say whether I'm, I'm going to vote to keep it open or to close it. My concerns have been, and I'm going to say it again, there's so much renovation that has to be done. We have not put it out for a bid to see exactly what needs to be done at this point in time. I mean, we, we're looking at studies from 2017. Well, that's 2017. We're at 2023 right now. And the Alderman came up tonight and spoke very nicely here. But the question is, would, if we decided to keep the school open, is, I guess, the mayor at this point in time, would he get up and say that he's going to guarantee that he's going to talk to the Alderman to, to bond the school to fix it? Because my concern is that, are we going to be opening up Pandora's box there? We don't know everything that's wrong with the school. We just have an assumption of what's wrong with the school, because a lot of times, I'm going to say it again, we piecemeal things back for the time being. Rather than going in and fixing them and getting the school up and running properly, we don't do that in the district. We have, what, $13 million worth of deferred maintenance out there? That's $13 million of deferred maintenance. And when we go to the Capital Improvement Committee, maybe we get $100,000. Well, that doesn't help when you have schools that need a significant repairs. So those are my questions. And I guess that's a separate question for Mount Pleasant, but that has to be on the table of conversation here, because are you going to be able to keep it open, go in and renovate it? I also called New Hampshire Housing twice on Friday because I wanted to find out what's going to happen with Led Street when it's Bronstein, I keep saying Bronstein slash Monahan, because I don't know the name of it, but we've taken the students and we've moved family into other areas. Are we bringing these families back? And how many additional families are we bringing back? Because that's an important question, because are they going to be flowing into Led Street now? So we need to take a look at that. I understand Mr. Preston's studies, because I grew up in the big city. I grew up in an apartment complex. And up here, more people, and even when I hit 13, my parents in New York and Queens, they went and bought a house. I understand the studies, what that gentleman was talking about tonight. Um, I do have a real estate license and there's no inventory here. We're down to nothing. So we have apartments, and I hate to say it, but the mayor's now talking about affordable housing, which we should have been talking about this two years ago, because once COVID hit, that's when our prices went sky high, because people wanted to leave the cities to get more into this area if they were going to work from home, because they knew Nashua was a good city. So I think it's not just about redistricting. I think we need to have a plan in place. We have to discuss what's going to happen with Mount Pleasant if we cannot afford to renovate it. That's what has to be on the table, because unless we can get a guarantee that we're going to be bonding this and it's going to go probably to Joint Special School Building Committee, then we can't talk about the life of Mount Pleasant, because there has to be an answer to what really needs to be done in that school. Because once you get into it, you have to go into the codes now. You have to be ADA accommodating. You have to have classroom sizes that are going to have to be bigger. Whatever the state laws now are, there's no more grandfathering, because we're going to get building permits and we're going to be doing work on that. So with that said, I'm going to go agree with Ms. Gilio. I think we should wait two years, because we need now to find out what exactly has to be done as far as work with Mount Pleasant. It needs to go out for at least three bids for what our policy states. We just can't have the contractors that we use right now. It has to go by law, the three bids, see what it is, then sit down as a board and find out, are we going to do this? Sit down with the Board of Alderman and Joint Special and whoever the mayor is going to be and say, this is what we have. Can we work with this? Or we're not going to bond this. And that's, that's how my decision's going to have to be. Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
May I address Ms. Gilio?
Mm-hmm.
You mentioned the intent of your motion. Is your intent to, um, put the necessary safety renovations, um, in that discussion out and doing the work, uh, until 2025? Also, just, I'd like to mention, we already have several large-scale bonded projects going on through 2026 currently. So what is, what would be your intent for the safety renovations?
I'm not sure that, that my motion addresses renovations at all. Um, I'm just looking, we were supposed to vote tonight on the redistricting plan, and I simply want us to put that off for two years to benefit all the students in all our elementary schools. We have other thing, as Ms. Johnson brought up, there are lots of other things we can be discussing, that we should be discussing. Mount Pleasant, of course, is primary amongst those. Um, but this was my simple motion to address the redistricting vote that we were to have taken tonight and may still take tonight. I, I hope that addresses your question.
Ms. Raymond?
Uh, thank you. Um, I think it, I think that there is, um, a level of injustice in asking this community to wait, again, some more to find out if we're going to do something to the school. Having said that, I think that, um, when we're talking about timing, we had to do the middle school redistricting, because we've had a process over the last six years of creating this middle school plan, and we needed to have those lines so that those students could start at the beginning of next year. Now that we are taking a look at elementary schools, kind of piggybacking on that process, we're discovering that there are inequities in our district. Um, however, I think that by delaying, it allows the board and the community to have the time to set up those forums at particularly each elementary school and really make sure that we get input from across the district. But it also allows us to then go to the Joint Special and go to the Alderman and talk about the money part of it. Um, because I think, um, I, I think that it would be a greater injustice if we, um, voted to not redistrict, but then also didn't look at what the building needs and just kind of allowed it to limp along indefinitely. So by putting a time limit and saying, listen, we're going to take two years and, and study it and talk about the bonding situation and look at how the new housing in the city is impacting our population density, then we can really make a more thoughtful and informed decision. As, but it really bothers me to leave people in the lurch. I think this is like the least bad option at this point.
Would we be, I, I see Mr. Smith back there. Would we be opposed to having Mr. Smith come down and speak to what some of the projects that need to happen in Mount Pleasant are? And maybe talk about what are some of the priorities over there? And, I mean, if we're pushing off a vote for two years, um, that also means that we need to start looking at construction and, and budget. And, um, are, are you okay with that, Dr. Andre?
I'm not opposed.
Okay. Mr. Smith, can you come down here as our expert building manager? Wherever you want. So Mr. Smith is the one who's in charge of all of our buildings. He presents us with the deferred maintenance plan. He's the one that maintains the list of all of the things that need to get done within the school district. Um, and I would like to hear a little bit more about what the plans are for Mount Pleasant to bring it up to an equitable status with the other buildings in the school district.
Okay. Hopefully you received the memo, uh, that kind of laid everything out for you, just the process of how we got to where we are now. Typically, schools are renovated every about 30, 30 years. Uh, Mount Pleasant's already well in excess of that. Um, one individual tonight said, we've had no plan. There is no capital plan. That's not true. We've been contributing to the capital improvement plan since I've been here. I've been here 26 years. Um, Mount Pleasant's been in that plan. It's showed up about 2015, 2016, if, requiring a renovation. At that point, it was about 30 years. Other events overtook that. I think the middle school project took precedence and pushed Mount Pleasant back a bit. So the current construction number, I'll backstep. We had, we did hire competitively a, an architect to look at facility and also to look at educational standards. And, uh, just looking at the facility, uh, we, we came up with a, uh, that was done around 2016, 17. I worked with them this past spring to update their numbers. And since then, we've also looked at adding a security vestibule to the school. So the number, total project number right now is 21,500.
Twenty-one million?
Twenty-one million.
Okay.
See, somebody else did that earlier, so I figured.
Yes. You guys flip flopped. Like, well, 21,000, we can afford that. So 21 million.
I took it off, they put it on, so I think.
Yes.
So 21.5 million.
Okay.
That does not include any, addressing any of the educational standard issues. So the, the, it's the same architect looked at that, looked at the state standards and looked to see where we were deficient. Um, maybe I'll talk about those real quick. Uh, of the 21 general classrooms in a building, 12 are slightly under state minimum square foot requirements. Uh, special education spaces were inadequate. Uh, the whole layout of the cafeteria and the kitchen is, my word's kind of funky. It's, you've got kitchen parts out in the cafeteria. Uh, the way to get to the playground in many cases is through the cafeteria. Deliveries are made through the cafeteria. Um, so there's a lot going on there. Nursing spaces are inadequate. Restrooms do not meet ADA requirements. Uh, we have a girl's restroom on one floor, a boy's on the next floor down, maybe it's the other way around. So if you have to go and you're out of the right sex, then you may have to go up and out of a flight of stairs. I mean, the, the building is basically on a, a postage stamp site. It's very, very small, small acreage. Uh, it's hard to expand the building beyond what's already taken place. So we have to work with what we have if we keep it open. So what were the 21 and a half million? So that's additional cost. I have no idea what those. I have no idea what those costs are. We'd have, I would say when we talk about educational standards, if we were to seek state funding, then that's what we really have to make sure we meet those standards. If we're not seeking state funding, I don't know that we have to. My non-educational opinion is if we have classrooms that aren't 25 kids, but they're 15, 16, 17, we don't need a 1,000 square foot classroom, which is what the state is kind of saying. What will we get for 21 and a half million? And keep in mind, this is not all just the hard construction. We talked about soft construction, hard construction costs. The hard construction cost is about 15, it's over 16 million. So the remainder, all the soft costs, that's paying for the architect, it's paying for asbestos abatement, it's paying for any furnishings we bring, testing services, IT infrastructure, security improvements, those sorts of things. That all comes up to 21 and a half. We would replace entirely the HVAC system. For those not familiar with the term, heating, ventilation, air conditioning. We would replace all the windows. Any of the staff that are working there now tell you those windows are a monster to, to operate up and down. Or there's actually a crank that's wholly inadequate, too small. We proposed to install a drop off lane in the front of the school, so off of the beaten track, off of Manchester Street coming into the school. We would retain the stormwater on the site. There's ways to do that. We've seen, we've done it in other schools. Hazardous material, so the asbestos, lead paint, those sorts of things will be removed. Want to add the security vestibule. Well, the teacher's biggest complaints, generally speaking, is lack of storage. That's usually followed closely by lack of electrical outlets. So those sorts of things would be, would be taken care of. I'd like to see us, and I think everybody would agree, we should, it'd be good to have a wood floor in that gymnasium instead of a VCT, vinyl tile floor. There is literally no insulation on the exterior walls, so we'd take care of that. And we, we're in a general throughout the district trying to upgrade our projection or, or display systems, be those panels or protectors that'd be part of this project. So I think that kind of summarizes where we are. For the costs that were provided by the architect, by the construction manager, were based on doing the construction in 2026, which means you have to start the architect a year before that, 2025. Think about it, that's not that far along. Every year, you progress past that at about 5%.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Lamphier?
I, I note that we need to make the security updates, and I was wondering what the price was for those alone.
Uh, that was just short of $900,000. So think about the school as you approach it, to get up to the main office, first of all, you have to climb some stairs. Then to get inside, you climb some more stairs. So the, the main office is separate from the, from the main entrance completely. We've added cameras throughout so that there's some security. All the doors are locked, we have access control. But we, the secure vestibule scenario we have is actually building an entrance on the side of the school, level with the ground as it currently sits.
I have a couple of questions. You mentioned the HVAC system. One of the things that we did in a lot of the elementary schools, especially with some of the ESR money, was making sure that the HVAC standards were up to the new COVID standards to prevent transmission of disease. Is Mount Pleasant up to those codes or is that going to be something that we should make as a priority? I think, you know, illness and safety is a paramount concern that we focus a lot on.
That is a definite priority. And the school's last renovated in 96, 97. It was up to speed on the codes at the time, but they, that may call for, say, three air exchanges an hour. Now we're up to eight. All the schools have been renovating lately. So it's not getting the same treatment as schools that recently renovated.
And you were mentioning that the bathrooms were not ADA appropriate. What do we need to do to make the bathrooms accessible to all students?
Totally demolish them and start all over again. Right size of stalls, provide separation barriers, that sort of thing.
Okay. And are we unable to prevent certain nursing treatments from happening in the school because the nursing station isn't big enough?
I'd have to go back and look at this study. I just, I just read my notes from.
Okay.
One of the things they keyed.
I just want to make sure kids aren't going without necessities due to space. Does anybody have any other questions in regards to what Mr. Smith has presented?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Oden, then Ms. Brown.
Thank you. In your experience, what would be the major problems behind the walls when, when they start to renovate? What are the most expensive problems they could find looking at the renovation?
So, so if we could talk about the HVAC system for a second, when you're installing that, you're installing air handlers, you're installing ductwork. So you have a lot of through wall penetrations that currently aren't there. When you open up those walls, there, there are surprises from time to time. When you're dealing with old plumbing, undoubtedly, you're, you're dealing with asbestos around pipes and around the elbows and that sort of thing. So it's, if you looked at the budget I put forward, I had $350,000 of hazardous material mitigation. But because of the age of the school, I also have a contingency fund of 1.6 million. It's a big number. It's a lot bigger than what we typically do for a school. But usually, it's about 5%. I went 10% this time of the construction cost. So it's always unknown when you start taking apart old schools.
Ms. Oden?
Just a follow up, and you might not have this information, but do you have any idea when they were building things, when Mount Pleasant was built or the last renovation, was asbestos common to be used?
It was when the school was built. In the late 80s, the, the rules changed, and that's when you start to see asbestos stop being used. I think it was trending that way already before that point, but when you get to the late 80s, that's when we definitely, things improved that way.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown? Add a couple of questions about the environmental concerns. I, I had known about the HVAC and the removal of the hazardous waste and that the windows need to be replaced, but I didn't realize that they were in quite that bad a disrepair. And there's no insulation on the exterior walls. So are we leaving our students, like extremely cold, and teachers extremely cold in winter and extremely hot in summer? Like, are we having a quality learning environment at this point?
So one of the comments I also heard earlier, I might, I might be digressing a little bit, but we haven't spent any money on Mount Pleasant. That's not true. I mean, we, we spent, I would say there was a, say this kindly, there was an uprising in the mid teens, early teens, about from the parents and the teachers, that it's hot. And I'd looked at solutions before that and involved even whole, whole house fan type sort of thing because there's a, a big opening up the top. So we spent, I don't know, $150,000, $200,000 just putting a new air conditioning on the, in the classrooms. We've replaced the, the roof. We've repaved the back playground. We've had a lot of fencing. We've added gates in that rear entrance. So we, we have spent some money. I just sidetracked myself.
Cute babies do that.
Yes.
Just, is it, is the learning environment uncomfortable compared to other schools?
I, I would say in this, in the, the classrooms that have air conditioning, I think the, the teachers probably tell you best. I think that's working quite well. It has, the heating is, I haven't really heard many complaints, honestly, from Mount Pleasant as far as lack of heat in the wintertime. I know it's, it's an old system. It has pneumatic lines, which is pressurized lines that go to the thermostats and those break sometimes and it's a little more difficult to control. Nowadays, it's all digital, it's all much easier to control. So I, my impression is this, people are comfortable. They could be more comfortable. They could be having more fresh air. That's, that's, that's the biggest thing I see right now. If, if we're only doing three air exchanges an hour, we should be doing something, you know, seven or eight. That's a big difference.
If, if we were to upgrade that system, the HVAC system, would we be able to get into the walls and upgrade that system without displacing students? Or is that, is that a project that would, you know, be a larger scale? We would need to, like, not just move kids from one classroom to the next? I'm just thinking back to the JSSBC where we talk about, you know, we've got all this stuff open, let's get the stuff in now. I'm also thinking of like when the mechanic's in my car and he's like, we've, we've already got the tires off, let's do the brakes right now. Are we able to consolidate and upgrade the HVAC system to make it in a more environmentally friendly place without too much disruptions to the students?
It would be, well, you're familiar with what we're doing at Birch Hill in Main Dunstable. So we're taking sections, building at the time, we're renovating it. The kids are moving, we have two portable classroom buildings at each of those two schools now. And we've also taken the gymnasiums and we're putting four or five classrooms in each of the gyms. So that's where the swing space is. You're looking, you're probably looking to do the same thing at Mount Pleasant. So you'd be putting portable classrooms in the front of the school. And, and the neighbors fought tooth and nail to get rid of the portable classroom we had there. They were told it was temporary and 15, 20 years ago, they still had it. So it's, we'd have to promise to just have it there for a couple of years and then take it out. Between two or three, probably three portable classroom buildings plus the gymnasium would give you enough swing space to take care of the school.
Okay. Can, can you tell me again, so 21 and a half million is what we were looking at back in 2016 for upgrades or is that with the?
That's the current number.
That's the current number.
If we were to renovate in 2026.
And, and you have how much money set aside right now that the district has to invest in, in Mount Pleasant without going for, you know, asking the city to bond anything? What do we have available? You said 1.6?
We don't have.
Or is that the overall budget?
We, we have a deferred maintenance budget. And, but that's, that's divvied up from, for various schools, various projects. I mean, if you drove into the North High School, you'd discover the pavement is, got potholes and that sort of thing. So there's a number of projects that are in there. I can't say that anything at Mount Pleasant would go with the forefront of all that. I'm, I'm not even sure where we are at 700,000, I think. It was escrowed or give or take.
Well, the hope is it'll be 700,000 and that's yet to be voted on by the Alderman. But, yeah, we don't, we don't have a reserve for construction, so to speak. I think Mr. Smith has made it clear many years, the way that we budget deferred maintenance and big projects is it's all done at the last minute by the mayor and the Alderman. It needs to be part of the budget process earlier on. It isn't, it hasn't been. So yes, is there, there is, I do have probably one reserve of about 800,000, which is on the books in case there's an emergency.
Mm-hmm.
But that would be if a roof blew off or something like that. So there is not a significant sum of money anywhere.
Hmm. Okay. I, I don't have any more questions for Mr. Smith. I do have a question for Dr. Andre in regards to the school's ADA accessibility and if we're able to provide students with the adequate, the adequate space and, can you help me with all these words that I'm looking for, Ms. Lamphier? Are we able to meet, like, if a student came in there and had a mobility issue, are we able to allow the students to go safely up and downstairs, move around, use the bathroom, just be in the least restrictive environment within their community school? Is that all the right stuff?
Yeah, I mean, the first thing that would come to my mind would be an elevator. And then if there is room in any of the bathrooms to have a wheelchair in there?
So I believe so, but I would defer to, you know, Mr. Smith. I'm not that clear on the, the.
Is there an elevator, Mr. Smith?
There is an elevator. I mean, so for the most part, like, the ADA, we are ADA compliant depending on the level of, of mobility needs. But I don't know the specific of how many bathrooms, how many stalls, how many square foot footage, you know, if there's a hoyer in different places, so I'm not quite sure on that. But there is an elevator, there is, you know, some, some ways to navigate around the building. But I, I think as, if we start going into bringing this building up to code, I think there would be a lot more changes. I mean, you walk up those front stairs at Mount Pleasant, and those are steep stairs or down the back. I think those are difficult to navigate for anybody, but there is an elevator for students with mobility issues.
Okay. Thank you. Any follow up questions to Mr. Smith and what we were talking about? Ms. Brown?
It's actually for Dr. Andre.
Yes.
So do you foresee any issues with other types of logistics that are not construction related if we delay this vote, if we're thinking about making kind of decisions for redistricting in 2026?
So I really take the heart, there was a lot of comments tonight about the city's master plan, right? And just how, how are we in alignment with the city master plan? And so I don't think there's any educational obstacles. I, I think every educator, power, every adult administrator in our building does the best for our students. So no matter what happens, if we have to move students, every single school, every single educator, every single power, every single secretary, I'm going to miss people, so I want to be careful. Every single administrator at the, at their heart and their commitment is every single student. So I think we'll find a way, and we've shown over the years of being innovative to meet the needs of students. It is tough times. So educationally, I think our students will be well served. And I think, again, working with our school community on, coming, devising a plan to meet those needs. So educationally wise, I think we would be fine with a delay. And being able, again, I think really to coordinate with the city, with the Board of Alderman, the mayor, and the community. I think Ms. Raymond said, said that re-engaging on really what is the overall commitment to public education of the city, kind of moving forward, and some of it is that financial commitment. How do we know in a couple of years if bonds are going to be there, if there is the needs of the district on, on just what is the commitment? Is 1%, 2%, 3% increase is going to be enough to support the, the services and the quality of services that we're currently providing, especially as times are bleak? So I think that really is a one Nashua kind of conversation, not just about Mount Pleasant, but for all of our schools and what does that, the future look like? I think there is some timing and some that the stars are aligning at, at the end of this year. We do need to start addressing our five year strategic plans. So what do our schools look like in 2028? And I think there's that aspect of what is the community commitment and kind of moving forward, and part of that is the finances. So working more closely with the Board of Alderman, with the mayor and with the community on what does that look like over a number of years? I have seen like five year plans that are not only on the school side, but on the city side on what a potential funding for the next year. So if we knew what our increases were for the next five years, we could be more strategic on where our investments were going to be. So, especially when so much of our funding comes from the city. So, so I don't think there's any obstacles per se in our education. I think the real questions that we heard tonight is what is the city kind of master plan and how do we coordinate our educational services within that?
Any other comments or questions?
I have a comment.
Ms. Brown?
I am not going to support the motion to move the vote out to 2025 for several reasons. One, I think that, I think it's important for the community that currently is living in their homes and their districts to have the, to transition their students, their children simultaneously with, from their elementary schools to the middle schools. I think that it makes sense to do those things together, as difficult as a decision as that is. I think logistically, it makes more sense now. We're talking about traffic patterns, we're talking about bus routes. It just makes more sense to do it simultaneously. I think the costs for the renovation of Mount Pleasant is going to continue escalate, and that needs to be taken, taken in consideration. I mean, we have that information from Mr. Smith and all point, all signs point to there. And additionally, I think we need to think, we've been talking about the potential for both job growth and population growth in Nashua as. both job growth and population growth in Nashua as time goes on with new buildings. What school district you live in and whether it's middle school or how many schools are in your school district affect future home buyers and potential people who are going to move into the apartment complexes that are going up, the homes that are maybe possibly turning over from retirees to younger families. And I think pushing those things out are just going to be a few more things that are actually probably going to negatively affect an influx of young families in Nashua. So I will not be voting in favor of delaying the decision.
I would actually agree with you. I know, I know I've had discussions, but everybody knows kind of where I'm, I'm coming from on this. But I think it's important to note that there is no guarantee that we're going to get a bond to upgrade the school. It is 100% guaranteed now that it's not meeting the equitable standards with other schools. All of the things that I think we've all stood very hard on over the last several years is environmental safety for the students, accessibility for all students, and the ability to provide, you know, similar curriculum in regards to, you know, electronics that are in the classroom and having them be throughout the district. I think if we push off the vote until 2026, not only are we, we're 2025, but with, with the school, so the vote would happen 2025, and then the shifts would happen after that. I think if we make the decision at least tonight about Mount Pleasant, we can at least start looking at having, I would like to have both of the votes tonight, but I would be okay with voting on just Mount Pleasant and then looking at the redistricting lines once administration is able to 100% say how many kids are going into each of the different schools. I think we have rough numbers right now about how many kids are going into Title I schools and how many are going into non-Title I schools. And I think once we have an answer to Mount Pleasant, we can officially say what kind of services we can put into the non-Title I schools that will continue to meet the needs of the students. I know you guys are concerned about having the students stay within their starting school so that there's some continuity of, of education and, and being in the place that you started off in. Being in elementary school is the time where you're learning to read, you're learning to socialize, you know, then going off into middle school is when you start kind of policing yourself and giving yourself opportunities to, to learn on your own. What I'm concerned about with, and I hear you, and I 100% agree with you. I would love it if all of the kids stayed in their school. However, if we push the votes out, that means that we push out the vote, we start the middle school September of 2024, and then for some students, you have kids now going into middle school for one year and then switching into another middle school the year after. I would argue that elementary students are a little bit more resilient than middle school students are in regards to getting to know with their environment and their social circles. I think second graders make friends with everybody. Seventh graders are very cliquey, which is what they're supposed to be. So I am not in support of pushing the vote out, but I'm willing to continue to have a discussion about splitting up the votes if, if we're able to come to any consensus with that. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I came in here tonight pretty much voting to shut down Mount Pleasant tonight. I listened to the reason of Ms. Giglio and Ms. Oden, especially Ms. Oden because she has been a teacher. I'm not a teacher. I don't know how the kids progress. I only know I'm a parent, I'm a grandparent now. I see what goes on. Do I think that Mount Pleasant's probably going to be renovated? I don't know. That's a discussion that we really need to sit down and have. It's a big discussion because it has been put off because other schools came before Mount Pleasant. I mean, we've got Main Dunstable and we've got Birch Hill. But the, and I've said this since 2000, when I was on the board the first time. Why would Main Dunstable curriculum be any different than Mount Pleasant curriculum? They should all be the same curriculum because if one child travels from one school to the other, they have to be able to pick up where they left off in that school. So if this is not happening, shame on us as a board. And I can't blame the administrators because they're all brand-new. I blame the past administrators. And I've spoken about this time after time after time, from 2000 to 2001, and then I moved to the Board of Aldermen. And I still spoke about it as an alderman at large. I mean, shame on us if we don't have equality in these schools, that every student, no matter which school they go to, should be able to transfer and still pick up where they left off in their education. I think at this point in time, even if we entertain this, we're going into 2024, if some of us get re-elected, at that point in time, we start the discussion when the new board comes in and you start working on this. So by even 2025, we know where we're going with this school, with the Board of Aldermen. And we get, I mean, I thank Mr. Smith for all his information, but I think at this point in time, if you're looking to keep this school open, then you have to really put the bids out and really get into the nitty-gritty because just saying that, well, we don't know what we're going to get, we don't know what we're going to get into. But you have asbestos around the pipes, which they used at, back when, to wrap the pipes. I mean, if there was lead in the building, we would have really big problems because anything after, anything before 1978, you can't even move into an apartment. You have to have lead remediation. So we need to take this apart in pieces, but I can't consciously do this to these students because it was this board and the, and the old superintendent that shut down these schools for so long. And then we let them come back in every other day, remote from home, we let them in. I mean, our students, really, it, it was a disservice to them. So I think we have to, at this point in time, understand the needs, and I can't put them through anything more. We need to let them get through, make sure they're at the level that they're at, in the schools that they're at. So by the time they get to middle school, we have put the students who was home during COVID. And so I'm going to stay with this plan right now. But maybe there should be a plan in place that whoever's on the new board in 2024, the discussions start immediately. Don't put it out to 2025 and then 2026. We have a good superintendent who's willing to work with us as a board, and he's in the district all the time, and he can meet with the mayor and the Board of Aldermen, and we can get this process going. And that's how I feel at this point in time. I know Mr. Claffey wants to say something. Thank you.
Mr. Claffey?
Actually, I had a question for Dr. Andrade and Mr. Donovan about ESER funds and whether, when that spigot runs dry, the timing will, do you foresee us having to make some major cuts? And if so, when?
Okay. The third of the ESER grants, the funding for that, is over September of 2024. All of those funds will be budgeted for by, let's say, September of this year. So there is a significant number of, there's a significant number of employees on that. There is a significant number of outside services we've been using. Some of them have worked out well. I think people would like to keep them. So is next year's budget going to be difficult? Yes. It's going to be very difficult because in a school district, once you give something, it's very hard to take it back. So we're going to start working on the budget early. There are going to have to be decisions made in the budget. So I'm not going to, you guys decide what you want to do with Mount Pleasant, but decisions will need to be made in the budget for this upcoming year, for the school year of 2425.
And then I had a, one other unrelated comment, and that is, is Ms., can I address a speaker from earlier, or should I just leave her name out? I don't.
Let's walk carefully.
Okay. I was, well, earlier tonight during public comment, I was struck by comments made by one constituent, and I, and I'm glad she said it. She talked a lot of, well, she said that she hasn't heard this board talk about inequity. And I don't know whether she had in mind the infrastructure, the physical space, or the students in that space. But the fact is, our elementary schools are starkly, starkly disparate. I mean, just looking at the number, I was just, so of our 12 elementary schools, five, five schools have free and reduced lunch populations of less than 25%. Half of our, five schools have 60% or more free and reduced lunch. So I don't know if that speaker had SES, that population in mind, those students in mind. And 80% of our neatest students are concentrated in half of our schools. So if we're going to have a conversation, I don't know if we want to go there. I don't know whether people in our community prefer proximity or equity, but it doesn't seem to me that you can have both. It really doesn't. So we, as a city, need to decide, do we want our students to be able to walk? Or do we want our students to be in a situation where our neatest students aren't concentrated in a few schools? And that's the reality.
Right. And I think, I think that was one of the things that came up when they were doing the redistricting plan, is that it was very difficult to get the, the school lunch equity amongst the elementary schools because they were community schools. And obviously, more neighbor, different, different neighborhoods have different economic abilities. And it was not realistic to say that each elementary school was going to have a shared amount of free and reduced lunch kids. But that doesn't necessarily mean that the free and reduced lunch kids need extra care. There's just a correlation between it, but that doesn't mean that every kid who has free and reduced lunch needs, you know, a para or a, or a special classroom.
Well, cer- certainly, that's the, that's the bar that's used to determine whether you qualify for the Title I funds, whether we like it or not. And I, I failed to mention, I wanted to add that whether or not Mount Pleasant closes, that's not going to address the equity or disequity. It's just not.
Right. Ms. Giglio?
I just wanted to add that it, my, my motion does not leave us without making plans for what's going to happen after the next two school years. I think that once, again, once the new board is, is, is in place in, in January, that would be a great time for us to start looking at what kind of redistricting we need to, for the beginning of the, the 2025, 26 school year. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have conversations. I think that we need to have lots of them and more of them. And I think that we really need to work together on that.
Ms. Brown?
I know I should keep my mouth shut on this, but I just can't help it. I, I haven't been thinking about at all what's the iteration of this board will be three months from now, let alone six months from now or three years from now. But I've heard it mentioned now three different times from different people this evening. And I'm now, like, my heart is kind of pounding because I'm starting concerned that this is becoming a political issue rather than an educational issue. And I do not want people to make this a, I don't want us to do that. We've had this particular board, we've had a huge number of oppressive decisions to make. COVID, contracts, superintendent searches, failed, success, very successful. This is a huge issue, and I feel like we may be taking this, by passing this, I feel like we're passing the buck. And I hadn't thought about that until, honestly, this moment, that I think that maybe our attitude on this is not the right one. So I'm sorry, and I, there you go.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, I'm a little bit insulted by that comment because I'm not one to pass a buck on anything. I mean, I'm always straightforward to the point. Many people know me in the audience, Board of Aldermen meetings, other meetings, school board meetings, back when. I just, I'm thinking about the students right now who got, who were home during COVID. We were the board, although I didn't vote for that. We kept them home. And then we had them, you know, remote learning. And then they were home, and then they were remote learning. And like, I'm listening to Ms. Giglio and Ms. Oden, who've worked in class, librarian and a classroom teacher. And again, I don't need to do anything politically, you know? Either people are going to like me, people are not going to like me. They're going to like my comments or they're not going to like my comments. And like I said, many people in the audience know me back from when my kids were in schools. And I haven't changed at all. So I'm do, I'm looking at the students. I think that whichever way the vote goes, if we decide that we're going to let the students stay in where they are for another two years, then this conversation needs to start next meeting on what exactly we're going to do and how we're going to make sure that our students are going to be progressing in where they are right now. I don't need the applause. I'm thinking of this as that if my kids were still in school, I would want to make sure that my kids were learning because the worst thing in the world, and Ms. Oden and I were talking about, the fact that in by third grade, if they don't have that reading foundation down, by the time they get into seventh and eighth grade, they could be three to four years behind in reading, and then we can't catch them up. I don't want to do that to these students. They had enough on their plate during COVID. We all did. We're moving past it, and we've got to make sure that these kids, by the time they get into the middle school, that they're prepared. And so next meeting, whichever way the vote goes, we need to be talking about what is the future of Mount Pleasant? What are we going, not unless you all voted down tonight, but we need to focus on these students. That's the most important thing. So I'm not doing it for political reasons, and I'm insulted by that. And I'm just going to make it very clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oden?
Can I say something about Mr., what Mr. Claffey said earlier? Good Lord, I lost my thought. This has been tough.
Three?
No, it, it was about having a, a balanced school population, whether people wanted to walk or be bused. And one of the teachers from Mount Pleasant, I believe it was Diane Merchant, talked about being on one of the redistricting committees. And she said, she offered the plan to bus all the Mount Pleasant school students, or most of them, over to Broad Street where the numbers are really low. And I thought, what a great idea. You would have a great mixture of students. But for some reason, her committee said, no, that doesn't work. I have no idea why it doesn't work. I don't know what was said, but I think we've missed a lot. That showed me, wait a minute, we need more information, what those committees were working on, why they made the decision. But I thought that decision to have a balanced school like that made more sense than anything I've, I've heard from this redistricting. So thank you, Diane Merchant.
Mr. Claffey?
I never used the word balance. I was just stating, giving you the numbers.
Yeah.
And telling you, that's what they are. And whether we keep it open or not, that, reality exists. I never used the word balance. I never said we should seek that. I just said you have to make a choice. Do you want neighborhood schools? Or do you want more equity?
I'm sorry. I did not mean to misrepresent you at all, but I think the balance or the equity that Ms. Merchant was, was asking for in the subcommittee was what we should be striving for. So that's, that's, that's all. And I apologize if I offended you by using the word balanced.
So I, I would also like to point out, and I have a concern about.
So I, I would also like to point out, and I have a, a concern about working towards something where we don't have a guarantee for where the money is going to come from. We now are 2,000 students down from our original core students. We have more than enough space in other schools to absorb these students. Administration is saying that they are able to meet the needs of all of the students, no matter where they go. If reading is an issue, we can put in reading specialists. I mean, we can be creative. How much money would we be saving a year if Mount Pleasant were to, were to shut her up? And how could we reallocate those funds to the rest of the district? And that's guaran, that's, walk me through a little bit of the budget now. I mean, we have a base. We've been operating on a three and a half percent increase, but that's not guaranteed from any mayor. That's, that's just our, our, our birthday money, is what I call it. You hope to get it, but don't plan for it.
Okay, the, as far as what we would save, the cost in staff salaries and benefits for the Mount, Mount Pleasant staff as of the, the end of last year, as of June, was about $4 million. So that's-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, guys. Can we stop with, it's hard to, I, I, I'm trying to keep, keep hearing everybody, and it's just hard when I have, when I hear the, the side. I'm so sorry. Mr. Donovan?
Yes, so that, that was the cost of, of the staff and their benefits was above $4 million.
We're not looking at getting rid of any staff, though. They can all be absorbed.
Well, you would certainly, I mean, if the school wasn't there, you wouldn't have administrative staff. You wouldn't have a principal, you wouldn't move a principal to another school and have two principals. You wouldn't have, um, you know, some of that staff would, would not exist, and the actual number of teachers in the district would be reduced. Would the specific teacher that's at the school lose their job? No, that teacher would go to another school and teach. But we wouldn't have as many teachers. We have, we have small class sizes in this district at the elementary level.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, look, if we look at the numbers, there's, as of a year ago, there were 14 classes out of about 250, or was it eight, 17 or 18 out of 250 that we had more than 20 students in a class, K through 5. So we have, the, the idea of just reducing the number of classes is simple. It's, it's very doable.
So just to complicate that a little more, because again, I think in some, in some of the savings and where students go, it's, you know, there might be more needs of educators, and so it might not be a one-to-one type savings with staffing or how, how we're innovative. So I think there would be a, a decrease depending on where retirements were in different buildings. But I think the other savings would be more the heating, you know, the cafeteria, those aspects of just running a building.
Overhead.
So I would be hesitant and cautious to say all the savings would come from our, the adult services and our needs because we would have to look at the needs of all students across. So we might need more students in a, more teachers, or more pairs, or more something across the district. So I wouldn't use that as a guaranteed savings, but we know electricity, heat, food services in that building wouldn't be necessary.
Mm-hmm. And that, that's roughly what, like $800,000 a year?
Um, I, I think it's a little more than that, but yeah. So anywhere from $800 to a million dollars.
And over, and just kind of overhead savings that we could reallocate to the students going into, you know, possibly the not Title I school, or even reallocated across the district to create more of that parity that you were. I'm just, we're just throwing it all on you now, Mr. Claffey. But I think the opportunity is there. We're not going to be searching for funds to meet the students' needs because it's going to naturally, it's going to naturally wash out. Ms. Lambfier?
Um, our state does a really poor job of funding our schools, and that's why our city is going to be, you know, short in a couple of years when the Estor funds run out. Um, I think we need to address that at the state level. We certainly don't want to make one school pay for, pay for it, pay the price of not having enough money. If, if we do have to cut the budget, it should be cut in different ways across the whole district. I would never want one school to, to, to bear the brunt, and especially not Mount Pleasant. We've heard so much that Mount Pleasant is a community with, you know, economically disadvantaged, and a lot of kids, a lot of immigrants, and, you know, it, it's just, it, it just wouldn't be right. So that's one of the reasons why I feel so strongly about keeping Mount Pleasant open. Thanks.
Ms. Raymond?
So I think this is going to be the last thing I have to say on this, but I think this is, this kind of discussion is why I'm in favor of Ms. Gilio's motion, because I think that this is a, a discussion that needs to happen on a more broad basis throughout the city as we talk about, especially as we're running into another five-year plan. And, and what do we do as a city? Because I think a budget is a document about the things that you care about. And I think Nashville has done a really good job about trying to prioritize needs, but we're coming to a point, we're not at a crisis point, we don't have a school that's falling down, but we're at a point where we're saying, okay, we renovated all but the most expensive school, and so now what do we do? And this is, I think we need that time to talk about where do we see our budgets going, and where do we see our population going, and what are the values of our community at large? And honestly, I'd, I'd really like to see some of those forums happening at, at all the elementary schools across the district. And I don't think that delaying redistricting for the elementary school is going to impact where the kids go to middle school, because those lines don't change unless this board comes back and votes to change those lines again. So, and maybe we will have to in two years. When we come back, we might say, we've tried the middle school for a year, and now we need to make some tweaks. But I don't think so. I think we let the middle school play out, we see how the feeding is going, and then we can utilize that information as we make this decision as well.
So I think we've all said what we're going to say. I guess we can address the motion, move to delay the elementary school redistricting lines until, um, you would like, because we did this last time with a vote, is, is it was a, it was a bit vague, and we kind of ended up with that two-week mark. Redistricting lines until the end of the school year 2025. Does that mean a decision is going to be made within the next two years, so that September of 2026?
Absolutely.
We have an answer?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, we have a huge process here that we need to go through, and I think we have plenty of time to do that work if we do not redistrict for the next two years. But yeah, I'm not saying that everyone's going to leave school in June of 2025, and we're not going to know where anyone's going in September of 2026. That's our work. We've got that work cut out for us, along with the community, as Heather says. It happened very quickly this time, between March and tonight, July, is just a few months that was devoted to the elementary school redistricting. I think that there's a lot to it, and I think that we all need to work hard to do it right. So I, I am not saying that we don't do anything. I'm just saying, for the next two years, I would like the children to stay in the elementary schools that they're attending right now.
Do we want to make a decision about Mount Pleasant for what happens at the end of the school year 2025 tonight?
That's not part of my motion. I'm not, I'm not motioning anything about that right now.
Okay.
But other people may want to.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
That's a different discussion.
I know. I wanted to make sure that that wasn't-
Right.
Like, we weren't pushing out, because I know we have a lot of people here who want to know what the answer is going to be so they can plan for their own futures. I think waiting, pushing it out doesn't allow for families to make the proper plans and for, for staff to make the proper plan. So I just want to make sure I'm not missing something. I'm just asking a clarifying question.
I think if we rush into it, then they, it's going to be worse than if the board comes back. I mean, really, right now, it's almost like in administration's hands, because we're giving them the direction now, what we want. We need to get updates on what is Mount Pleasant's true cost going to be. Do we keep the school open, or are we going to close the school? In the next year and, here to two years, we're going to see what's happening in Nashville with growth or non-growth. As far as the Bronstein apartments will be opening again, we're going to see what the mayor wants. If he gets reelected, he wants low-income housing, so it's going to be on his plate, whether or not he's going to produce that, and where's it going to be. So then we know what communities we're going to see. And there's really a lot of work. Who's ever going to be on the board between January and for the next four years? This is a lot that's going to be on the plate. But it's like we used to do, forums at different schools. Remember that, Ms. Oden? We used to go to different schools. Before we had all this televising, we went to the schools, and then you bring your, hopefully the community will come into the schools and be part of the conversation, what's going to happen to their school in the neighborhood. It's a lot of work, but that's the fair way, because someone said there, we didn't have enough transparency. Well, like you said, we got all the information quick. I wasn't on the board. When this whole thing came down, we got emails talking about who was in meetings, and not members of this board were in meetings when that decision was made for the McCarthy Middle School. So that was made, and then we had it in front of us. We've got that being done, and that's why I split the vote, because I felt that you couldn't vote on the middle school and the elementary school together. Two different issues here. So we did the middle school, now the elementary, and I think we need to take the time to walk through this with administration. And hopefully, the community's going to come out when we start talking about if this passes with the redistricting of the elementary school. If parents don't come out and we don't get the information, it's not our fault. Don't blame us. You need to be present, and people have to start waking up and saying, there is a priority here. It deals with my child's schooling. And if they can't come out, whatever the decision is made by the board, then, I hate to say it, you're going to have to live with it. So I'm just going to still stick with the motion here. I think we need the time and really work with the community. Thank you.
Okay. Yes? Dante?
Yeah, sorry. I've been thinking a lot about things to say, but just a basic question. If, if the school does stay open, like, is it safe in general for, I know there's asbestos there, like, I'm a big environmental advocate as well, like, are we just going to end up creating more problems safety-wise, that kind of stuff? That wasn't directed to anyone in particular, I guess, but.
So, um, there, there's the need of always improvements, but the safe, safety and health of the students are fine today. It's, it's safe to be in the school.
Thank you.
Okay. So on the move to delay the elementary school redistricting lines until the end of school year 2025, roll call. We'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Lambfier?
Thank you. I was going to ask for that, too.
Hey. I was just, whenever we have big ones, we do it. I was just assuming it would. Ms. Lambfier, go ahead.
Okay. So Ms. Darling is not here. Ms. Raymond?
Yes. Why don't we go with Ms. Gilio's motion? Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Nay.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Bishop?
No.
And Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Okay.
So the motion passes, one, two, six to two.
Okay. And, and to address the people who are here who want to know the future of their school, do we want to have a discussion about if we need to give them an answer about Mount Pleasant, or should we be letting them kind of sit in, in this vagueness until 2026?
We're waiting for the information that, that we're still waiting for, that, that Ms. Johnson's addressed. Um, no, everything's going to be ongoing. We're not just going to, okay, we just had this vote, now we're just all going to go on vacation for a year and a half. We have a lot of work to do.
Ms. Brown? So just for the sake of discussion, is it, since we need some, you're looking for updated costs with bid information from the 2023 to possibly 2026 through 2028 costs of a renovation of Mount Pleasant? Is that what we're thinking about?
First of all, we have to put it out to bid. That's what we have to do.
That's what I'm asking. Is that the information that you're seeking?
Right.
So my question is, can I ask, can I request?
It has to go to JSSBC first.
Yeah, that's what I figure is going to have to do.
I request that, um, we bring before finance or to JSSBC, whichever the president would find appropriate. I would be happy if you would assign it to either committee. So we have to, we have to ask for it to go to JSSBC? There has to be a vote that they even want to take it up? If it doesn't pass JSSBC, then we don't have Board of Alderman and the Board of Ed working together on asking for the bond and then creating this, this bigger capital improvement project? So we may not even get it into, the city may not even want to address this for, you know, five or six years. I know they have their own project plan, so we may not be able to do any upgrades on Mount Pleasant for half a day. So I'm wondering if to get more accurate numbers, if we need to put out to bid an architect to do the more updated designs?
Yep.
So I would be interested, yes, go ahead.
We have pretty accurate numbers. I mean, I know Ms. Johnson wants to go out to bid to get more accurate numbers. How much money do you want to pay to get a number that's going to be $100,000 difference? We have good numbers. That's a fact. So make your decisions on other things. That would be a waste of money.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yep. Okay. I'm just taking a moment here to get my head around what, what the next steps are going to be, just because I, I just, I can't. It, it feels, you know, it feels like Elm Street all over again, where we have all of these upgrades, too, and we have, we have these amazing other schools that can meet the kids' needs without as much distress. But that's just my own personal opinion, and that's my vote, and I already did it. It's just what, what happens next. So I guess. Dr. Andre?
It sounds to me like you're either going to charge the administration with starting a task force or work in conjunction with the BOE on a subcommittee on a task force or developing the next steps to engage the community and make recommendations to the JSSBC or the BOE on the, the future financial implications. So it sounds to me like there's a task force to really lay out the plan and be strategic about it.
Okay. So I like that. Do we need to make a motion for that? I think we do. So we move that the administration puts together a task force to look into the needs and financial implications of renovating Mount Pleasant, right? And then reevaluate the redistricting?
So I wouldn't limit it to just Mount Pleasant?
Yeah.
I think it's a, a Nashua, City of Nashville kind of conversation.
Are you writing this down?
No.
Go ahead.
Um, can we tell the people of Mount Pleasant now that the school is definitely not going to close for two years? Or are we still, is that still up for vote?
That was the, that was the vote.
Excellent. Okay. So you guys, thank you so much for all your hard work.
So, Dr. Andre, did you want a motion to create a task force tonight? Or do you want us to go home, think about what the motion should state, and then come back with, like, send us a, like, come back next month?
Yeah, I think it's, I don't, I think there's urgency on what we need to do for the next two years, but I think it could wait for a month to really organize our thoughts on what that's going to look like.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I guess we're done for a bit of time. We now have policy. However, let's take a five-minute break because the next part of this is incredibly boring if you guys want to get going, unless you want to stick around for policy. But we'll take a, a five-minute recess right now. We're back from our recess. We're back from our recess. Thank you, everybody, for coming and showing up and and giving that good old Nashua passion and support that we've seen so often. I really appreciate it. I will now hand the floor over to Ms. Raymond for her policy committing.
Okay, thank you so much. We met last week on the 18th, and so I'm going to move that we approve policy BEB, special board meetings as presented. Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Seeing none. All those in favor of approving policy BEB, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. I move that we approve policy BEDC quorum as presented. Second.
Any comments or questions?
Hmm? No.
All right, and I don't know if anybody else found this, but this meeting wasn't posted on on YouTube, which is where I like to watch this. So I tend to remember things better when I see them, so I'm just looking these over now again. Remember them differently because we're all different learners.
If you look in your packet, it starts on page 59.
Oh, no, I'm here.
Oh, okay.
I'm just.
So we have a little grid with a summary.
Yes. So all those in favor of approving BEDC, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, anybody? Anybody opposed?
Nope.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, there's a typo on the agenda. My motion is actually to rescind policy BEA-R, which is procedures for participation in a meeting by electronic or other means. Second. All right, so just to be clear, that is to rescind it because we took all of that information and included it in our quorum policy so that it matches up with state law.
Okay, all those in favor of rescinding policy BEA-R, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Same thing here with the next one. My motion is different than what's on the agenda. The motion is to rescind policy EBCF-A, the temporary policy on leave due to COVID-19 as the COVID-19 is officially over. Second.
Any comments or questions? Ms. Gilio?
No.
Oh, I saw you turn your microphone on.
No, I'm shaking my head. No, I don't have a comment or a question.
Okay, all those in favor of rescinding policy EBCF-A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. I move to approve policy EHB, data records retention as presented. Second.
Any comments or questions? Okay, so all those in favor of approving policy EHB, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. It's a long policy. Scroll, scroll, scroll. Okay.
All right, I move to approve policy IHAM, health and physical education exemption from instruction as presented. Second.
Any comments or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Yes. Did we add into that what Ms. Darling had asked? I couldn't find it.
We did in the meeting, and if you look on page 68 in your packet, you'll see that our updates from the meeting, your edit regarding medical professionals instead of just physicians, and Ms. Darling's edit to include teaching regarding birth control are in blue.
I like my edits, but I had a problem with that in committee. I just thought that you're teaching one and then you're offering something else. So I'm not going to support it.
But it's the, it's offering the instructional program to also provide education in regards to birth control, not providing birth control. Am I reading this wrong?
No, it's only teaching that birth control exists. It is not providing anyone with any medications ever because we could not do that. That would be illegal.
Correct, and as a, as a follow-up, I did follow up Ms. Jengris about this, and birth control in abstinence are taught as part of the sex ed unit. So that was a request that had come forward, and I also have copies of the scope and sequence of the health curriculum from elementary school, middle school, and one of high school offices that I can also distribute after this.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Brown?
Is the current curriculum aligned with the state models?
Yes, and that was part of the policy work that Ms. Jengris and Mr. Roby had had taken on. So this, we are in line with the state models.
Excellent. I would love it if we could maybe have a brief update of that in a curriculum meeting coming up in the next couple of months.
Well, I'll reach out to them, and I'm actually, I'm just going to pass along the scope and sequence that we made copies of regarding the health curriculum K to 12.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving policy IHAM, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes.
I move that we approve policy IHAM-R, health education exemption from instruction opt-out form. Second. And just to mention it, for anyone who has an objection to any of the items in our health or sexual education curriculum, this is the form. It will now be available on the website for parents to download and submit. Our policies also require two weeks' notice to parents before we touch on these topics, so parents will know in advance that they're coming up so that they'll have ample opportunity to get the form and fill it out and send it in. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, on the motion to approve IHAM-R, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, I move that we approve policy KHB, advertising, sponsorship, and recognition in schools as presented. Second, I'm sorry. Second.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving policy KHB, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, and our last one is I move that we approve policy KHB-R, which are our advertising procedures. Second.
Any comments or questions in regards to this? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving policy KHB-R, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Sorry, I have to go back to the agenda. We did human resources, so now we are on to new business, so I will give the floor to Dr. Andre.
Thank you. For the first new business item, I'm looking for a recommendation to approve the Nashua School District's request for a teacher of the deaf, a teacher of the deaf in a, as a critical shortage area. As you know, we have an outstanding program throughout the district and we're in desperate need. So we're looking to be working with the Department of Education for alternative pathways. So we're looking for approval to identify this area as a critical shortage area.
So does anyone want to make that motion? Heather, Ms. Raymond?
I'll make the motion. I have a question.
Okay.
I'll make the motion exactly the way Dr. Andre just said it.
Okay.
And, oh, shoot, I just lost it. So earlier this evening in HR, we approved a teacher of the deaf position, and this is to add another one to the district?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll second Ms. Raymond's motion. Any comments or questions? Follow-up? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Nashua School District's request for teacher of the deaf in critical shortage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The second recommendation I'm looking for is to approve Brentwood Academy as a standalone school housed at 55 Franklin Street School in Nashua as opposed to school districts. By doing that, so as a standalone school allows the district, just for grading purposes, to allow for schedules and grades, increase revenue if we have outside out-of-district students attending our school. It also allows us for food service reimbursement. There'll be a new kitchen at the school and also for our special education services to be identified as a service provider. So I'm looking again for a recommendation to approve Brentwood Academy as a standalone school housed at 55 Franklin Street.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Ms. Raymond?
I didn't realize that it had lost its standalone kind of status when we moved from Merrimack to Amherst Street, so this seems like an important change.
Well, it, Brentwood was originally run by Suresk.
Oh.
Once we took it over, it's been a program. So it really didn't have anything to do with location. It had to do with who was running the program.
Okay. Yes. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving, all those in favor of approving Brentwood Academy as a standalone school as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Thank you. Patricia Lee?
Thank you so much, Patricia Lee, Ward 3 Alderman, 9 Maywood Drive. First off, I'd like to thank Ms. Gilio for her motion, and I'd like to thank all of you for every comment that you made, whether I agreed with it or not. I think you're all passionate. I think you all spoke from the heart, and I hope that politically no one holds anything in any way, shape, or form, because I think you're just being who you are. And and I don't think anybody meant anything of ill will in anything that they said. But I do have a few comments. One is, as far as larger classroom sizes, that doesn't, just remember that Mount Pleasant students have needs that maybe Broad Street students don't have. Doesn't mean that you're not going to bring those resources there, but when you're making your decisions, just keep that in mind, is that there are many different needs at Mount Pleasant that some of the other schools don't have. Number one is, they're the only trauma school right now. I hope that you do push that out to all schools, but right now, they're the only trauma school. So if you take all Mount Pleasant and put them somewhere, make sure you bring all those programs with it. That is extraordinarily important. And the other thing is, I want to thank Dr. Andre for your thoughtful comment about that this is not just Mount Pleasant. It's not. It's citywide. It's Nashua. And to that end, I I think that Ms. Johnson stated it very clearly, that we need to know what needs are between every school. So what what is the budget required for every school if we were to bring it up to par? Now, we made comments about that the three parts per whatever versus the eight parts per whatever through the air exchange. Why was Mount Pleasant kind of left off that? And the only thing I can think of is was because in the back of everybody's head, we were going to close that school, so let's take care of some of the other schools. I hope, I actually kind of hope that was the answer and not just that Mount Pleasant doesn't count, because I don't think you people are anything like that. Pardon me for saying you people. Truly, you're you're very hardworking people, and and I I know with being elected official, how hard it is to make these hard decisions. So I just, I think that those are just some of the thoughts that you need to have. And one other comment, when you're talking about savings with Mount Pleasant, maybe you will or maybe you won't save the $4 million on on staffing. And and it does go beyond teachers. It goes beyond some of the administrative staffing and so on. But I said to Dr. Andre during the break, the city and the taxpayers are still on the hook just because the school district is not paying that electric bill. The taxpayers are. You're just moving it from the school district back to the city. So as I said to him, if that happens and when that happens, if I am on the board, I'm going to make sure that all of that funding that would have gone to that goes back to the city. So the taxpayers suddenly aren't, whether it be $800,000, $500,000, or $1 million, that they're not paying. You get to keep the $1 million, and then now the taxpayers have to come up with another $1 million to pay for that utility. Just, it should follow with the building. And I know that the waters are not even every year. There's an increase in the budget, but I just want to make sure that we note that, that this $1 million does not stay with the school. You're not saving. It's going back to the city as it as it should. And then I want to make a comment. My comment about the multi-year plan, that happened during, as all of you were, over 50% of you were there, that Mount Pleasant gym non-meeting, where it was discussed that you were just working on a plan. And I was shocked by the fact that we didn't really have this multi-year plan. And I think the comment came out when I said, okay, well, it costs this much for Mount Pleasant, how much for all the other schools? And I think that answer couldn't be answered. We need to know all those answers because wouldn't it be shameful if we closed Mount Pleasant because it's going to cost $22 million, only to find out that one of the other schools costs $23 million? You know, probably not because Mount Pleasant is older. Mount Pleasant has a lot more unique issues, but just be thoughtful and don't think it's an old school and we have this number. So I I think some of the comments that have been made here, and I I don't think you necessarily need three new, three new plans to find out something we already know, but find out what the cost is for all the other ones. Since I've been a Board of Aldermen and since I've been on the Joint Special all this, all this time, I have seen so many schools get built up and each time. And yes, you may have spent money on HVAC, but it was a used HVAC. It came from another school. So you're not putting brand-new money, brand-new capital improvements into Mount Pleasant. They've been kind of the the stepchild of the school district, and it breaks my heart because they're such special students, special teachers, a special principal who is now leaving, and I know we're going to have a great principal there now. So just moving forward, just keep thinking about that. I know you will, but I just want to bring it forward so that it's in the front of your brain and not in the back. So thank you for allowing me to speak again. Take care.
Thank you. You're not on the list. There's no Adam Marku tonight. Feels like we're in the Twilight Zone. You don't want to just come up and say hi? Adam's here, everyone. Talk to him and say hi if you want. All right, so this brings us up to board member comments. I want to again thank everybody who came out tonight. I, the, the, the passion that we have for our school district, I think surpasses all of the other school districts everywhere. So we will start public, our board member comments, I'll start over here with Ms. Raymond.
Okay, thanks. So no one's here anymore, but I did want to speak to the, no one from the audience is here anymore, but I did want to speak to Nashua Goes, Nashua. Hi, everyone. Nashua Goes Back to School is happening next month at the end of August at the library, which is an opportunity for people to come out and meet their principals, get to know some of the the staff. Also, there's typically school supplies there. So in preparation for that, the first week in August, I believe the United Way is collecting backpacks and school supplies, and then the first week in August, the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter is also collecting backpacks and school supplies for their program that they provide school supplies for families living at or below the poverty line. So as we start to get our back-to-school lists, anybody who is financially able to pick up a couple of extra packets of things, those are some really valuable organizations that do a lot of really good work in our community for our kids who need it.
Thank you. Mr. Claffey?
I just want to commend the Board President for running tonight's meeting so deftly, diplomatically. I mean, the potential was there with such a sensitive, volatile topic. And I know, even though you lost, you were certainly.
I didn't lose. I have an opportunity to win again.
You were certainly a model of sportsmanship, but seriously, this was really deftly handled.
Thank you. Lamphier?
So being on the board is a huge learning curve, and a lot of times, I feel like we come here and it's the administration that sets the agenda. And I'm so excited about Ms. Gilio's motion and that now we, as a board, are the ones that are going to decide what direction we want to go in. I think it's, it's really exciting. I think we can do good work, and I think it's nice that we'll be able to show the leadership that we're all capable of. So thank you, Ms. Gilio.
Ms. Brown?
I'm still writing, so I'm just going to weigh it. I'm really, I think it was great that we had a couple of representatives from different departments, both in the city and the state this evening. Thank you, Alderman Clee, for coming out and also. Thank you, Alderman, Cleef, for coming out, and also the two state representatives we had come speak. I think that one of the things we need... Three... Oh, three state reps. We had three state reps tonight. And I think moving forward, I think we... As we observed, it's been the kind of the cornerstone of this discussion, is that we need to come together more frequently as multiple governing bodies to make long-term decisions and use the same information rather than differing information or... And planning these type of long-term projects a little further out into the future. So I will be really excited to see the folks on the JSSBC, which many of the Alder persons that are currently serving there are... Have been running that particular committee for quite some time, been serving on that particular committee quite some time. So I would like to see how they choose to move forward with the information that we have tonight, and then also the information that they've already had for several years to work from. So I hope that everyone is having a wonderful and safe summer, and I'm really looking forward to seeing the teachers and the kids back in the school soon. Bye.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I was on the winning side tonight. Isn't that amazing? It's usually me going down for the count, and I'm not on the winning side. But we... This was a win for our students. That's what I feel, and I want to thank everybody who's left in the audience. Alderman, Cleef, we're on the same side, like I was with Ms. Gilio tonight, you know? And I got to see June Lemon, who I haven't seen in a long time, and she's such a fresh face. I remember all her comments that she used to write in the paper. We used to say, yes, here we go. Another great comment from June Lemon. But I don't feel that, you know, the administration sets the agenda a lot. It is us who should be putting... Kind of working with them so we're all on the same page and we're going down the same path. And this was a good conversation tonight. We had a report. I thought the report was pretty good. I understood the report. But you know, when you're on a board, you listen to both sides, and that's what you have to do. And you can come in figuring you're going to vote one way, and then you'll listen to the arguments, and you can change your votes. And you'll listen to professionals who you sit next to. It's to my left. Well, that's right, to my left, not to my right. And they can give you that valuable information. Like, I would turn to Mr. Claffey also, because he's a former teacher. And they can give you informations about a classroom that you, who've never been in the classroom, can open up your eyes. I thank Dr. Andre and Ms. Pasco and Mr. Donovan for all the hard work. But I think, you know, now we roll up our sleeves and really get down to the nitty-gritty, and we decide which way we're going to take the path. We have some time now, rather than making a quick decision, which way it's going to go, I don't know. But again, I think we have the numbers. I'm just not 100% convinced that those are the real numbers. Do we... I talk about the bids only because it's the same companies that keep giving us the numbers, and I don't like that. That's why I ask, because the policy says here, and the city's policy is, and that's what we should be going by, not because we bring them in and say, okay, you've done all the work for us, what do you think? And that's where my problem lies. Go by the policy and by the NROs in the city. But thank you, everybody, for showing up tonight.
Oden?
I would like to echo what Mr. Claffey said. I think Ken Bishop has done a very good job running this meeting. In many other difficult meetings, you've had a lot of difficult meetings to run. And Ms. Raymond, you had your share, but I commend the way you have respectfully handled everything as president. It's not as easy as it looked. I did it for one year, and oh, it was... It was tough. So thank you. I appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
So I was somewhat anxious coming to tonight's meeting, but I want to thank all of you because I think the discussions that we had were really extremely valuable, and I feel reinvigorated for our school district going forward. And I want to thank all of the Mount Pleasant people, if they're still watching on TV, for being here. And thank you.
Thank you. I think I just want to echo back at you guys, the positive sentiments. It's actually been really easy to be president of this board, because everybody comes... Everybody comes to these meetings with 100% passion and a belief that they are doing what is best for the people that they know and the district that they know. It's really easy to help guide this board into not... Maybe not necessarily a decision that I share, which it's odd to be on the other side of things right now. But it's very easy to guide this board in a positive discussion, because everybody here, you can tell, values each other. We don't yell. We don't cross-talk. We do our best not to interrupt and to be rude, and I just think one of the things that we have shown... That we've shown the city in regards to the Board of Education is that we can do things respectfully and with professionalism. And I'm just incredibly proud to be on a board who's willing to... Who's willing to stick their necks out as much as you guys have. I think we can... We can sit back and let other people make the tough decisions for us, but that's not our board, and we do it with thoughtfulness and respect. And it's clear, we reach out to administration to get all of the information that we need. I'm really looking forward to coming up with, you know, helping Dr. Andre come up with the task force. I already have some ideas on the things that I'd like to do and see what I would... And we'll have more conversations about that. Really just listening to everybody here. Everybody has valid points, and I think we can come up with a timeframe, meeting tasks, and we can stay on point so we can have the best decision ready to go, so we can start implementing plans with enough time before September of 2026... 2025. So I look forward to everybody's participation in those meetings, and I'm looking forward to see, once we vote this over to JSSBC, to see what the city believes is important with our educational system, and if they're willing to... You know, if they're willing to increase the bonds that we have to show that we are working towards equity and... Equity and respect for all of our families and students. So we'll see what happens with that, but I am incredibly proud of working with you guys, and I'm just excited to get on to the next steps. So thank you very much. I also want to thank our student reps here for being here tonight. I know you guys are exhausted after that Europe trip you were on, huh? Who bought the wooden clogs, and how mad is their mom?
My mom was actually on the trip, and she did not let me buy them.
We heard them clomping through the airport as they were coming home, and it was just like, I don't know, it's worse that other crying baby that was on the plane. But I'm glad you guys are back, and thank you for your worldly knowledge now. Are you seeing the world in a different way?
I think it's interesting, because in school, you're taught all these things. You're taught about paintings. You're taught about battles, and then you're actually standing at the battle sites. You're looking at the paintings, and it's definitely... It's almost surreal, like knowing what you're looking at, the history that you get to see with your own eyes.
Yeah. That's awesome. Want to add to that, Dante?
Yeah, I kind of agree with everything. It is nice. We have some things here that just... I don't know. You realize coming back, just that we're pretty lucky as well. For example, some of the bottled water there did not taste... One of them tasted like it had a weird aftertaste of milk, but that's a different story, I guess. But it was really cool to just...
Aqualeche?
Yeah. I'm going to... It was good.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you for your input. And Ms. Johnson?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We are now adjourned at 9:25.